Good afternoon. Want to welcome all of you to the May 11th, 2022 Meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and want to thank those who've joined us in chambers and those that will be presenting later in the program here today in the agenda and also those that are joining us via our broadcast. And with that, then we'll call the meeting order. I'll ask our clerk, Alma Minos, to please call or roll establish a quorum and read some information to the record and then we'll move into the agenda. So Alma.
Good afternoon. Member Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
And Natoli?
Here.
And you'll have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14 and Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, May 15th at 8:00 PM on channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attention pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing a face covering mask or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make public comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call off-agenda matters. When the chairperson calls your name, go to the podium and make to make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue to make your public comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments by mail to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Alma. And if you'd joined Supervisor Serna, please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Alma. Okay, so we now go to our off-agenda public comments. I have one in chambers. Do we have any on the phone, Alma?
We do not have any off-agenda commenters on the line.
Okay, very good. So we'll go to a person that signed up here, Larry Bell, Mr. Bell. And you'll have three minutes on off-agenda items. So, good afternoon.
I just felt like I should be here today. I don't have anything in particular that has to be discussed. There are a few comments that I will make. One is that at 3:00, I wanted to talk about the homeless.
Okay.
Because of the, I see it on the news all the time, and I don't know what you can do about the homeless situation, but I let a girl into my house and she stole from me a month ago, and now what she stole has been returned. So whatever the county comes up with on this homeless situation, I think you should pay more attention to what's going on with these homeless people. I'm not homeless. I graduated from Sac State in '71 before some of you were born.
I graduated '78, so I was behind you by from Sac State.
It's been a long time, and I really wanted to be here. Now, I do have a couple of insurance matters that are in another jurisdiction, but they have to be dealt with, and one involves Bank of America. Wells Fargo Bank used to be my client when I was in San Francisco, but here in Sacramento, this is my hometown. And basically, what I have to say only deals, only deals with this homelessness, and I've seen the RVs and what have you. I don't know what you can do about it, but I just felt like I should be here today, so I showed up.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Bell. Thanks for showing up, and we'll get to that item at 3:00, and you're welcome to speak to that item as well. So, thank you for your comments. Okay, we have no one on the line off-agenda, so.
We still do not have any callers in the off-agenda queue.
And I know we have some presenters on the next item. Anyone here else on off-agenda? Otherwise, we're going to close the off-agenda comment period. Okay. We'll go ahead and close out on the phones, and we'll then have you call the next agenda item if you could.
Item number, item number two is recommendations from the Sacramento County Public Health Advisory Board regarding youth mental health and correctional health prevention of and alternatives to incarceration.
Great. And I know we have a number of presenters here. We have some of our distinguished members of our Public Health Advisory Board, and I'll let either Farla or Libby or somebody introduce the rest of your group, but we have some presenters and appreciate you being with us today, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Chair of the Public Health Advisory Board, Farla Kaufman, and we'd like to thank you for the time and attention to these matters that we're bringing forward today. I'll have everybody introduce themselves after this, but we are bringing forward two letters, we sent two letters to the Board of Supervisors on these subjects, and we appreciate this opportunity where we can present again and have a discussion about them. So with that, I'm going to call in Sanaa Patel to present to you by phone on the youth mental health recommendations. Sanaa, can we pull her in?
Hi, this is Sanaa.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go. Hi, Sanaa. Okay, go right ahead.
Hi there. Great, thank you. And just for folks' awareness, this presentation begins on page 20 of the agenda. So my name is Sanaa Patel, and I am also a member of the Public Health Advisory Board. And thank you so much for allowing me to present remotely on this very important issue of youth mental health. As we look at the first slide, we really just wanted to start by discussing what youth mental health looks like today and provide a few significant data points. We know that COVID-19 has had a very sudden and profound impact on our community, and the county took the necessary and appropriate public health measures such as online learning and working from home to keep our community safe. However, some of these measures also increase the likelihood of youth mental distress. Even before the pandemic began, we know that mental health challenges in youth were real and widespread, with one in five youth diagnosed with a mental health disorder, and the rates of mental health distress have increased over the past decade prior to the pandemic. In Sacramento County, youth mental health-related hospitalization rates have increased by 36% between 2003 and 2019. So the question is, where do we go from here? We know that there is a growing problem, but more importantly, we know that mental health issues in youth are treatable and often preventable. So our purpose in coming to the Board of Supervisors today is to recommend four school-based initiatives that are critical, limited-term investments that have fewer barriers to implementation, and that will quickly help to address the growing youth mental health On the next slide, before we dive into our specific recommendations, we'd like to discuss why we are prioritizing school-based services for youth. First, school-based mental health services can reduce and eliminate barriers to accessing mental health services and treatment. Since youth are already in schools, schools offer a really unique opportunity to serve students, and by removing barriers such as transportation and scheduling conflicts, school-based mental health services can help youth access needed resources during the school day. Second, school-based mental health services serve students where they are, and services come from trusted peers and teachers. So these services can be delivered by peers, mentors, teachers and staff, mental health professionals, either on-site or remotely. Third, increasing access to mental health services can reduce the burden on the county mental health system. Approximately 50% of youth in Sacramento County are enrolled in medical. Therefore, anytime we can increase access to school-based mental health services, there may be a resulting decrease in the number of youth who need higher levels of specialty mental health care from county mental health. Next, normalizing access to mental health services in schools can really help to destigmatize mental health and lead to an increased willingness among youth to access mental health services. And then finally, prevention and early intervention can really reduce or prevent poor academic outcomes and improve mental health and life outcomes. If we can identify, diagnose, and treat mental illness at a younger age, we'll see significant improvements with a youth's ability to learn, grow, and develop. On our third slide, we outline our four initiatives for the Board of Supervisors' consideration. These recommendations really aim to promote and emphasize the voices of those in our community who've already done much of the heavy lifting. They've worked with stakeholders and youth to identify the ways in which the county can take immediate steps to make an impact on youth mental health. In addition, these initiatives are consistent with the recommendations issued by national bodies, including the U.S. Surgeon General and the American Academy of Pediatrics. Our first recommendation is to implement youth and parent-friendly mental health literacy education. Mental health literacy provides the necessary foundation for mental health promotion, prevention, and care, and is truly necessary to effectively address youth mental health. In addition, when parents also have mental health literacy, they're better able to recognize mental health problems in their children and assist them with seeking help and support. Our second recommendation is to increase training for teachers and staff on mental health. Children spend much of their productive time in educational settings, and as such, schools offer a unique opportunity for early identification, prevention, and interventions that serve students where they already are. Our third recommendation is to implement telehealth mental health services, including access to mindfulness mobile applications. Telehealth platforms allow students to access needed mental health support and resources, and can help to close health equity gaps, increase access to services, and help students stay in the classroom to prioritize learning. Our recommendation prioritizes the implementation of a mobile phone-based application that might allow a youth to connect with a school-based or local community resource, crisis support lines, or any other need that youth identify as something that they could use. Our final recommendation is to initiate new and enhance existing school-based peer-to-peer mentoring programs, which really help to increase the youth's voice and leverage trusted peer-to-peer relationships. Peer mentoring helps schools create safer and more nurturing school environments, as peers can help create trust and put youth at ease, especially when a youth has refused to talk to others. In addition, peer mentoring programs help to build youth capacity to become mental health wellness champions, and may result in increased interest among youth to pursue careers in mental health. The four initiatives that we presented are really significant prevention and early intervention measures that can begin to help address the growing youth mental health crisis. However, we know that there is still a greater challenge of expanding treatment services in schools. We're very excited to hear that Sacramento County is finalizing their next 10-year plan, and really want to lift up and highlight the work that the county is already doing, especially their commitment to having a social worker in every school in the county. The success we've seen so far, in spite of some of the difficulties we've seen with workforce and recruitment, really demonstrate the county's commitment to youth mental health. We also understand that funding is a very critical piece of any investment, and that we do need to find some ways of identifying sustainable funding sources. Having said that, we do think this is a really opportune time for the county to leverage the significant investments made by the state for youth mental health in last year's budget. Attachment one on page 11 of the agenda highlights funding included in the state budget that may be available to support some of these recommendations. The Public Health Advisory Board is available as a resource to the Board of Supervisors to help identify possible state and other funding sources, as well as to help in the implementation of any of these recommendations. We appreciate the Board of Supervisors' consideration and attention to this critical public health issue, and hope the Board will consider supporting some of these initiatives to expand school-based mental health services. I really appreciate your time, and we're here to have, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Sanaa. And we do have a couple of members in the queue here, so we'll go to questions. Supervisor Kennedy.
I, more of a comment. Sanaa, thank you so much. I appreciate virtually everything that you said, and I hope that our staff is listening in on this and thinking about this as we put together the budget. As they say, the budget shows your priorities, and there should be no priority, you know, higher than the mental health of youth. I remember when I was on the school board, we looked at, you know, doing mental health programs with children that were in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Now we're looking at 3 through 12, because it's, you know, particularly in those neighborhoods that we all have in our districts, that kids see, you know, devastating things all the time. There's trauma every time, you know, there, we have kids that literally have PTSD at a very young age, so this, this should be a high priority for the county. I am proud of the fact that, you know, we as a board have adopted, first, we have a youth mental health board as of about a year ago that we had not had before, which is, we've always had a mental health board, there's always participation of youth, but nothing that focused on mental health for youth the way that the, there was a voice that was being lost. And as they say, if you're not doing it with me, you're doing it to me. So, you know, we are including the youth voice in there, and I want to continue to press upon that to my colleagues as well as staff. We also have embarked on a program largely through the leadership of SCOE board member Bina Levkovich and the superintendent Dave Gordon, I had the pleasure of working with to see to it that we had clinicians on campuses. I believe next year, and board member Levkovich could correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to have 60 on 60 different campuses, and that's as opposed to about three years ago when we had zero. But, but that's not good enough, and we need to continue to drive that number up until we are really ubiquitous in every campus, because if you're asking a parent to take a child in the middle of the day to go to a county-supported partner across the county, and that parent is a single parent or doesn't have transportation or is a grandparent, you know, there's so many, that's, that's like not offering services at all. So, you know, thank you, Sanaa, for your words. You were spot-on, and I hope that we will take this to heart as we look at our budget in the coming months. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Patrick. Supervisor Desmond, and then Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Sanaa, I also want to thank you for the presentation and echo the sentiments of my colleague Supervisor Kennedy. I too support the recommendations you're making, and I know staff is listening certainly to this, and not only clinicians on-site, but the peer programs, which are so crucial. We are certainly in a, our youth are facing a crisis. I've certainly seen it among my own children and their friends. So thank you for really raising this issue up and bringing this to us today.
Thanks. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. And thanks to our P-HAB and Sanaa for the presentation on obviously a very important subject. I note in the, the letter to us that there is a suggestion or recommendation to the Board about developing comprehensive strategies to strengthen the available resources that are under the auspices of the county of Sacramento, along with partners like SCOE, to not just develop and implement more effective mental health programming, but also substance use disorder programming as well. But I didn't see, I didn't see much mentioned in the, in the four strategies that, that really referenced substance use disorder specifically. So I'm wondering if you have any thoughts that weren't in the PowerPoint, or if you'd like to elaborate based on what I've read in the letter.
No, certainly, Supervisor, and thank you for that feedback and question. I think from our perspective, given the impact of COVID on youth mental health, we prioritize what we consider to be some relatively simple, not-too-hard-to-implement priorities that the Board could consider, and we would love to see an integration of substance use disorder into these initiatives to the extent possible. However, in an effort to really quickly address this growing youth mental health crisis that even the U.S. Surgeon General has alluded to in last year's Public Health Advisory, we really just wanted to put youth mental health out there as something that we need to get on very quickly. We would absolutely love and support any integration of substance use disorder in any of these recommendations. So it's certainly something we're happy to take back and look into further, or, you know, come back with additional recommendations. But we are absolutely supportive of integrating substance use disorder services and resources into these recommendations.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. I think we're all painfully aware, just by reading the headlines every day, that we have a chronic opioid problem in the country and in the county, especially with the introduction of fentanyl as an extremely dangerous part of that. And seems to me that if we are going to be as comprehensive as I think we all need to be and want to be about how we take seriously the behavioral health as well as the mental health of our young people, that we should also be looking at how the county's existing infrastructure around treating and addressing substance use disorder could be broadened to, to address the fact that unfortunately, more and more young people are experimenting with opioids, and, you know, again, we read too often of tragic deaths from overdoses by young people as well. So I just wanted to, again, thank you for your work and make those comments, and hope that as we move forward, we can certainly stress the, the need for both more robust mental health practices for young people as well as substance use disorder programming. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I just wanted to thank all of you for your leadership, those of you that are on the Public Health Advisory Board, and Sanaa, the work that you've done over the past year or more time. I remember last year when I was the chairman of the Board, I was concerned about the COVID, the impacts of the COVID lockdowns and the impacts in our schools, and there were people like you and others who had, had approached me as the Chair of the Board, and, and we were reaching out to our, our county mental health and to SCOE and, you know, looking at ways, how can we update our plan around how we manage mental health and, and resources for children in the schools, because we anticipated it was going to increase, and it sounds like Supervisor Kennedy was right at the heart of it and working on it too, which I really appreciate all, all that that you did. And I also wanted to say I'm excited about your thoughts regarding parent, parent-friendly, you know, child and parent-friendly literacy education, and we're working right now on a program. I don't know if you remember the Arrive Alive program where over, you know, years ago, we used to, and those of us that are a little older, they used to have this realistic video presentation that they brought to the school. If you get drunk and drive, you could end up like this, and it was a sort of a, you know, a way to reach children and have an impact on their thought processes as they're developing. And there are some really good organizations working on this type of a program for fentanyl, which we're working to hopefully bring into the schools. And so I love all your recommendations and appreciate your work, and I want to thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sue. I just would add to some of the comments here, certainly appreciate the work of the, I think you're now known as the Fab Board, is that right? The Fabulous Health Board? But certainly the work and certainly the presentations, Sanaa, and I think the thoughtfulness that went into the recommendations. And I just had a question on the third bullet, it's no longer up there, but on the telehealth, mental health services, I guess I'm kind of curious as to, certainly in the time of COVID, we've gotten much more familiar with some of the applications that you can do via other means than just in person. And in there was a, in the recommendations that include access to the mindfulness mobile applications, so is there a series of applications that are available, that need to be available because somebody has to, you know, either purchase the rights to, to share that? I guess I'm just curious. I'm not knowledgeable, and I just wanted to know what more in that arena could be done and what the recommendation was pointing to.
Thank you for that feedback and also the question, Supervisor. You know, I think from our perspective, there are numerous apps that could help the county achieve what it would like to do in terms of youth mental health, really with bringing down barriers and increasing access for students. I know, for example, the Grace app rolled out for Sacramento City Unified School District last year, and I think Grace stands for giving resources and care every day or everywhere, apologies. And that app really prioritizes mental health and was actually developed by the students in Sacramento City Unified School Districts. So there are a number of approaches we could take. I think a couple that we really wanted to prioritize were something along the mindfulness line, mindfulness line of thinking is helping ways to improve prevention, not even to the point where the youth needs services, but really just to even help them, prevent them from getting them there. So some of these apps like Calm, they help students just sort of work through on a daily basis some of their feelings, some of their thoughts. There are apps out there that even the state is working on, they're working on a virtual platform that will ultimately hopefully be integrated more broadly into schools, but within this platform, there would be a way to access services or get a referral to services. And I think that's a little bit more complex, because it does require necessary capacity to provide services to students. So I think we would really look to our counterparts, especially in county mental health and the Sacramento County Office of Education, on what approach would make the most sense. With the third recommendation, really what we wanted to prioritize was telehealth itself as a recommendation, and making it easier for youth to privately during the school day off their mobile phone, find ways to make it easier for kids to access these services or access these resources, as opposed to having to go into a doctor's office and receive such services. I think that's really what we want to get at, and the way that we do it, we would really defer to our counterparts, to our subject matter experts, and know what these youth need.
Okay. Thank you for the elaboration on that, and it makes it clearer, and I think obviously consistent with some of the other comments here, not just having an application or access, which is key, but then having the ability to back it up with the service delivery that, you know, you would access, so that whether it was getting in touch with a professional, you know, trying to seek some intervention, and having someone who can, you know, adequately and sufficiently respond to that. So, well, thank you for that. A little out of order, but I know Bina Levkovich is here, and certainly she's a member of the County Board of, Sacramento County Board of Education. She's assigned to speak, but probably on this particular topical area, so why don't you come forward, Bina? And again, I know Supervisor Kennedy, but I would just join with him in acknowledging your leadership on the Sacramento County Board of Education, work with SCOE, obviously, and certainly with Supervisor Kennedy and other professionals in the field to really address some of the issues outlined here, so, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Natoli and Board of Supervisors, and also thank you so much to the Public Health Advisory Board and Ryan Quist and Siobhan for your leadership on this issue. So I've been out at PTA meetings over the last eight months, talking to parents and teachers, and obviously, the mental health crisis is real to them. You know, they describe cases of students having meltdowns, of fights, of students being afraid to go to school because they're afraid that there's, it's not safe anymore. And so, and I see, I've heard from parents that are desperately seeking help for their children. And although I truly support more than anything the social worker in schools program, I think that's in a way a longer-term kind of tier-two, tier-three solution, fully behind it, but I feel like right now we have this immediate urgent need, and to help young people and parents learn about coping skills and know who, how to identify mental health or drug and alcohol issues in their kids and where to get help. So I think you're, I think the strategy around mental health literacy, behavioral health literacy, and peer programs is so right on. I think it is one of the quickest ways to get support to our students, since young people are already in school, right? Since they are more likely to talk to their peers, we know from surveys that youth want to talk to young people, their peers, more than we know from surveys that youths want to talk to young people, their peers, more than they want to talk to adults. That young people could quickly be trained up with some basic skills on how to educate their peers, on how to talk to their peers around coping skills and when to know to get help. You know, peer programs are a youth development strategy. So that means peer programs, yes, we're teaching kids about mental health, but we're teaching them important life skills. We're teaching them agency so they can be able to take charge and, and solve problems. And those things, that youth development skills, those youth development, that youth development programming actually helps lots of outcomes. It helps academic outcomes. It helps mental health outcomes, drug and alcohol outcomes, also career readiness outcomes. So I think it's a powerful strategy that has multiple benefits. And peer programs are a proven strategy. There's models right here in Sacramento we can draw on. So in closing, I just want to say this board has been incredibly supportive around youth mental health. So thank you. But I believe that the urgency is now. These are great recommendations, but I feel like we need to figure out what we can do now. Like my pipe dream is this summer to figure out a way to get some resources to our CBOs to help them get, get young people ready. So when the school year starts next year, we have a cadre, maybe 1,000 young people ready to go to be peer mentors and peer helpers. So thank you very much for this time.
Great. Thank you, Bina. Appreciate your comments and certainly your leadership on this issue as well. So I don't have anybody else sign up to speak. Was there anything, Sonali, that you wanted to, or Sonali, that you wanted to conclude with? I don't have any other questions here from board members?
I signed up for three.
Okay, this is item number two.
Ever sheet takes ahead.
Oh, Mr. Bell, this is, this is item number two. Did you want to speak to this item? You're welcome to speak to this item.
Mental health. I don't know where you are. My phone stopped working and this phone is a week behind.
Okay.
So everything that I'm doing is a week behind.
All right. Well, you're, you're in the right place. And, and you're welcome to speak to this item. But we're going to get to the homeless discussion on the encampments. That's the next item. But we're on mental health right now. We still have a point.
Since I'm here, I'd like to comment on mental health.
Okay, you're welcome to. Go ahead. We've had half of the presentation thus far, but you're welcome to speak to it. So.
Like I said, it is true that this, this is about a week behind. Sometimes it's up to date.
Okay.
But I wanted to be here a week ago and I found out that this telephone was wrong. My phone stopped working. Couple of things that I think are germane. In coming here, the alarm on my 68 Camaro doesn't stop. So it won't start. So I rode the bus. When I got on the bus, I'd noticed that all these kids were on the bus. It was full. Wednesdays, they get out early. So that's what happened. And in writing, I realized that much of what, many of the problems that these young kids are having have to do with drugs. I don't take drugs. I've never tried drugs. I know that a lot of Negroes have experimented with drugs. But I figured out that I didn't need them. And I don't take them. I haven't taken them for years and years and years. I tried weed a long, long time. I don't know how long it was before I went to Hollywood. But, you know, I'm, I'm back here. Most of my friends are in the Bay Area. A couple of things, I'm, I'm going to have to do an appeal because my name has been removed from some, from a tax on a house in another house. They're, they're getting set up. This, they're getting set up for me to have to be here and to talk. So the tax situation, I will do an amendment on that. I did try to do it through the city and that was wrong. So during the county, we'll have to, we'll have to do something. But it's not important. Now, this, this drug situation though is important. And I, I notice, I, I don't just see the RVs. I see the tents too. And I, I made a mistake because I said I graduated from Sac State in 71. It's actually 70. I graduated from Cal Berkeley in 71. Now, Cal Berkeley is having this problem with, this is on the news. I, I have to ramble because I'm not prepared. But they're having this problem with a master key is opening locks. That's happened a couple of times to me. So I know somebody has been in my house and I have to assume that it was through a master key. So Cal Berkeley is doing that. And, and I'm loyal to Cal, but I'm in Sacramento. This is my hometown. I, at my height, I was captain of the basketball team at Grant High School. And I went to Sac State in, as a freshman, and I played ball there. And I coached at, in the Bay Area. Cap Alpha Psi Fraternity, I'm a life member of the fraternity. And so I don't know, and I couldn't follow all of what was being said there. But I don't know what can be done about this drug problem. But it just seems to me that the drug problem is related to education. And it's going to be necessary for some kind of way to resolve this educational problem in order to properly solve the, the drug problem. And those drugs are quite a problem. So that's what I have to say right now.
Well, thank you for sharing, Mr. Bell. We appreciate you commenting. Okay. So that was the first part of the presentation. I know there's another presentation. So Farley, do you want to introduce that? Or are we going to just have folks come forward? So again, thank you, Sunal, and thank you to the Fab Board and to our commenters as well. So.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair. And I think we'll have, we'll pick up from where we were in the slides before.
Okay.
First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors for giving us the opportunity to advise on matters of public health and specifically for taking time to hear us today on the topics we've come to present on alternatives to incarceration. Personally, I just appreciate that after a year and change of working on this topic, it's so nice to be in the same room with a lot of the folks that we've been dialoguing with. So really appreciate that. I'd like to start by just giving a little bit of context and maybe while we're getting to the slides.
Okay, we'll get the slide. Yeah, there's another half of the slideshow.
Okay.
Metro in the back, if you could please bring up the PowerPoint for item number two.
And you need to tell us who you are too. You just.
Oh, that's right. I was looking at you. We've had so many conversations. My name is Libby.
I know.
And I've gotten the chance to speak with a lot of the folks here today. So I'm Libby. I'm a member, thank you so much, of the Executive Committee of P-HAB as well as the co-chair of the Working Committee for Correctional Health. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks.
Okay. So a little bit of background. I think we can skip ahead to where Sunal left off and we would be the next slide. Oh, I have the, great. A bit of background on the Correctional Health Working Committee specifically. So about a year ago, P-HAB started a working committee to look at the topic of correctional health. What gave rise to this was a COVID outbreak in the jail, as well as some concerns articulated by the community around the availability of basic medical and mental health services in the jail. And those concerns resonated with what we saw come out in the May's Consent Decree, as well as the monitoring reports. So we determined that this was an issue we wanted to investigate a little bit further as P-HAB and understand a little bit better. Over the course of a year and change, we've spoken to a wide number of folks involved who touched this issue from a number of different angles, including each of the supervisors here today, the Office of the Inspector General, the Sheriff's Office, Health Services, Correctional Health, Behavioral Health, the Public Defender's Office, the Courts, the Mental Health Board, County Council, May's Class Council, and the new Public Safety and Justice Agency. And although we've spoken to a wide range of folks with different sort of angles on these issues, there is one sort of theme that kept coming up again and again and again. And that is that there are too many people in the jails. To put a little bit of context on that, so Sacramento County has a particularly high incarceration rate. That incarceration rate is 42% higher than other counties in California and 15% higher than other comparably sized counties in the country. Although the jail population reduced a bit at the beginning of COVID, we have since returned to our pre-jail, our pre-COVID jail census. So kind of thinking about that bigger picture, we, we know we have a high incarceration rate in Sacramento. We also know that we have particularly high populations of unhoused individuals, individuals with substance use issues, and individuals with mental health issues. So we wanted to sort of investigate the intersection of these things. I want to deep dive and just look at some of the data we have on the jail population to give you a sense of who we're talking about when we talk about the jail population. To start with, we have 82% of the jail is pre-trial. We also, and that is a figure from earlier this year. We also.
From earlier yesterday, we heard that number quite, quite a few times yesterday.
That's right. Yeah. And I know you guys spoke a bit about some of the topics we're going to touch on today, yesterday as well. So in addition to that, if you look at the first bubble, we have 55% of the jail at a particular point in time that had a length of, say, of less than or equal to seven days. When you put those two points together, we actually have a relatively low risk jail population in Sacramento County that is short term and pre-trial. And in 2020, Sacramento County actually commissioned a report by the CARRY Group to look at jail alternatives. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. As a reminder, one of the conclusions or one of the findings from that report was that we have a low risk jail population. So I think important to keep that in mind as we talk about jail population reduction.
Just a moment. We have a, Supervisor Serna wanted to ask a question.
Oh, please.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure, perhaps you mentioned it, Libby, are you or did P-HAB look at incarceration in both of our jail facilities or just the main jail?
That figure refers to, my understanding is both of the jails from the CARRY. Those figures are from the CARRY Group report and they looked at both jails.
Okay. And then I noticed there are some footnotes here, numbered, numerical footnotes. Do we have, is there somewhere in the presentation we could reference that?
Yeah. So those are the sources for the data. Let's see. The CARRY Group is the source for the 55%. Adult Correctional Health was the source for the 82%, which you're not familiar with. And I believe the other two come from the Sac County Mental Health Work Group.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So looking at those other, did you have any other questions?
No other questions right now. Go ahead.
Okay. Looking at the other two kind of data points we have on here that I think are instructive. So 15% of the population at a particular point in time had more than 11 bookings in the last six years. We also have a revolving door issue with this population. And finally, we know that this population has a lot of underlying needs that are not being met in the jail. Those needs are mental health, housing, behavioral health, just as one example of that. 66% of the pre-trial population have a mental health need. So we want to kind of put all of that together to paint the picture. We know that we have high rates of incarceration, significant unhoused populations, and significant populations with substance use disorders and mental health needs. And we're seeing those interact and contribute to an unsustainably high jail population with a revolving door problem. So it's in reaction to those findings that P-HAB set out to provide recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And specifically, we wanted to provide clear and actionable pathways for addressing these issues urgently. The unifying objectives of these recommendations are to, one, enhance access to behavioral health and housing services for justice-involved individuals because those individuals have specific needs, barriers, and entry points into these systems. Number two, reduce reliance on the jail as a service provider for Sacramento's mentally ill and substance-using populations because we know from the monitoring reports from the May's Consent Decree that the jail is not able to adequately meet those needs in the jail. And three, in so doing, reduce recidivism and reduce the jail population. So finally, I want to acknowledge that underlying our recommendations is the fact that there is sort of a parallel conversation around jail expansion as an option to reduce some of these pressures on the jail. And the county is awaiting a set of consultant reports meant to address this issue. I think it's just important to keep in mind that even if the county goes in that direction, that will take several years to yield the results and relieve the pressures on the jail to construct the annex staff it. We're seeing staffing challenges across all sectors right now. So what we really want to do is focus on some of the immediate and actionable solutions in front of us. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay. So just again, to kind of frame why we're, why we're focused on reducing the jail population as our key outcome. Well, as a public health entity, it's actually a public health best practice. And in fact, the American Public Health Association recommends, one, urgently reducing incarcerated populations, and two, reducing carceral system funding and investing in social determinants of health, including housing and health. So as P-HAB is the public health advisory body, we align with those principles and would like to see Sacramento County align with that in practice and reduce the effort and resources that are going towards incarceration and instead allocate effort and resources toward addressing the underlying needs. Number two, the May's Consent Decree does require the county, quote, "It commits the county to consider measures to reduce the jail population and to prevent the unnecessary or avoidable incarceration of individuals with serious mental illness." Under the settlement agreement, the county has agreed that a reduction in the jail population is a cost-effective means to achieve constitutional and statutory standards. I want to underline that cost-effective piece, again, pointing to the CARRY Group report that the county commissioned in 2020. One of their conclusions was that reducing the jail population significantly could create cost savings that could be redirected to promotive, preventive, and treatment programs that will keep Sacramento County's population safe, healthy, housed, and out of jail. And then finally, with regards to a U.S. Supreme Court decision from last year, which holds that Sacramento Superior Court must evaluate alternatives to incarceration for the pre-trial population. So wrapping that all, all up, reducing the jail population is public health best practice. It is cost-effective, and it is in compliance with legal standards. And I, I think it's just to pause quickly. I think most of the supervisors and most of the folks in this room agree with that in principle. And what we really want to drill down, down on today is the urgency needed to address some of these issues and to commit resources ahead of the budget cycle to action against these issues. So that takes me to an overview of the recommendations that we provided in a recent letter to the Board of Supervisors. Today, I'm going to walk us through the first one, and then I'll hand over to my colleague Phil, who will address the second two. So on the first bucket, which is specifically about expanding capacity for pre-trial diversion, I've mentioned a couple of times the CARRY Group report from 2020. One of their other major findings that I want to highlight is that pre-trial represents the greatest potential for jail population reduction in Sacramento County. Because of the sheer proportion of the jail population here that is pre-trial. And at the time of writing the CARRY Group report, actually, our pre-trial population was 60%. And it sounds like, as you all know well now, it's 82%, representing an even greater opportunity to work with this population to reduce the jail census and achieve our goals. Both the Public Defender's Office and the Probation Department have pre-trial programs, which I understand the board had the opportunity to hear about yesterday. Here, we have recommended expanding the Public Defender's Program specifically because it aligns with our stated aims of connecting individuals to the services that they need and reducing the jail population. The two programs have slightly different approaches that I think are worth highlighting here. Though the differences may seem subtle, they're important when we think about our ultimate outcome of jail population reduction and connecting folks to services that they need. So the Public Defender's Program takes a needs-based approach. And the goal essentially is to assess underlying need and conduct, connect individuals to wraparound services. The core intervention is creating a plan that links individuals to the services that they need and then providing support through social workers and other interventions to make sure they fulfill that plan. By contrast, the probation department program, the core intervention is to assess risk, define probation terms, monitor compliance with those terms, and the corrective action is arrest, which actually has the unintended consequence and potential to lead to additional folks in the jails and in the correctional system, which is sort of counter to our shared goal. I do want to acknowledge that on this slide and on the letter that we provided to you, we quoted some recidivism data. And I know that's tricky. The way that recidivism is defined and measured varies across these programs and in fact, across the space. I think as a first recommendation, actually, we'd really recommend to the county to define criminal justice and public health outcomes a little bit more precisely, and then invest in the routine information systems and programmatic evaluations that would allow the county leadership to identify successful programs against shared metrics and then allocate resources accordingly in an evidence-based manner. So we'd love to see actually more of an apples-to-apples comparison, which right now is hard to make. I think it's also, this came up in yesterday's presentation, but the DOJ uses a three-year timeline for evaluating the effectiveness of these kinds of programs. So we do have some time before we can truly evaluate the effectiveness. However, in the meantime, we're recommending, so a second recommendation is to expand the capacity and invest in the Public Defender's Pretrial Program because of its values alignment, as well as its early success and that 2% recidivism rate. Currently, the Public Defender's Program is grant-funded, predominantly grant-funded. And so the recommendation here again is just to make sure that those two programs are on at least equal footing and to expand general fund and stable funding sources to the Public Defender's Program, again, because of its values alignment and its early success. The final note I want to make here on pre-trial is that you'll note that we did not include a recommendation around expanding the collaborative courts. Those courts are not pre-trial and actually require a guilty plea. So could have the perverse effect of incentivizing a guilty plea even for an individual who's maybe innocent and wishes to get out of jail or be connected to services. And just to kind of loop back to that CARRY Group again, the, the real opportunity to meaningfully and substantially reduce the county's jail population is through pre-trial programs. With that, I want to hand over to Phil.
Before you hand it over to Phil, do you have a couple of folks in the queue? So Supervisor Serna.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Chair. And thank you again, Libby, for your portion of the, the presentation. And thank you again, Libby, for your portion of the presentation. I trust you saw the proceedings yesterday?
I got a recap. Unfortunately, couldn't get out of a work meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I thought it was a very good presentation, both by probation and PD's department during yesterday's hearing. I did, at the conclusion of the presentation, by each, asked the very express question about whether or not each believed they work in tandem, they work collaboratively, and that they're not in competition with one another. And the response that they both gave was that, yes, they do in fact work collaboratively. And in fact, if it wasn't for the probation department's program, there would not be an opportunity for many incarcerated inmates to actually be released so that they could take advantage of the PD's actual programs and those of community-based organizations. So it does trouble me a little bit that there continues to be kind of this theme that seems to be somewhat pervasive that somehow the probation department and the Public Defenders Office have two very different widgets here, if you will. And yes, they have very different responsibilities, but I actually think if the public, I'm sorry, the probation department program was to go away, to be defunded, otherwise not be in existence, it would have the adverse effect of affecting the efficacy of the Public Defenders efforts. So does S P HAB given any thought to that dynamic?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. And it may be the case that the two work in a complementary fashion. I think even if that's the case, what we have seen and what we've observed and make recommendations around is the untapped potential or the sort of suboptimal potential of the Public Defenders Program. So currently, they're grant-funded, they have the capacity to do so much more, they need additional staff, they need additional resources. And the probation department's program, my understanding is, by contrast, gets significant general fund funding. So ahead of the budget cycle, what we're really advocating for is let's get the Public Defenders Program the capacity that they need to continue connecting folks to services. I would imagine this was presented yesterday, but I'm not certain, so I'm just going to recap. In the past 15 months, the Public Defenders Program connected 655 individuals to mental health services, 322 to substance use, 391 to housing. And I think the impression I get is they could do much more with more resources. So there's an untapped potential, and there's also a values alignment, again, from a public health perspective.
No, I appreciate that. I think those are great statistics to cite, but I think the important part of that that is not mentioned is those numbers will not be those numbers if not for the fact that probation is doing what they're doing on their side of the equation, which is to have the ability to have inmates released under supervision. So in other words, I don't think we have the ability to maximize getting folks out of jail in terms of our goals for jail population reduction unless they're both working together. And I understand completely the position of making sure that the Public Defenders part of it has stable and reliable funding. That part resonates with me. But for instance, the earlier comment or assumption that the way the probation, and I'm paraphrasing, the probation department resolves in some instances, working with early-released inmates, is to simply rejail them. I don't know that that's entirely accurate. There was a great part of the presentation yesterday by probation where they elaborated on all the various ways that they kind of gauge the risk factors associated with different inmates. So not every inmate is necessarily going to end up back in jail for not following the rules. So I just think we need to be careful not to paint with a broad brush, you know, the fact that probation does much more than simply surveil and jail.
Sure. And I appreciate that. Just to correct the implication, it's not that that is sort of the, that all folks who go through the probation department program are rejailed. But I think what we're trying to highlight is, again, like zooming out, what is our end goal? To reduce the jail population, get people into services, that there's a fundamental alignment with a needs-based approach as opposed to a risk-based approach. And you might need both to go hand in hand. Even if you hold the probation static, what we're saying is, and you say this is the part that resonates with you, that there's a lot more we could do with the Public Defender.
Agreed, agreed. And I would certainly, if there are members of the P HAB that have not taken advantage of a tour at one of our various adult day reporting centers, for instance, to see the good work that probation does that is not normally associated with what I think the general public associates with the roles of a probation officer, I think it would be good for you to see that because it's very, in some cases, there's a lot of intensive programming around therapeutic art programs. There's a lot going on in terms of making sure folks have access to resources to complete their GEDs, to find work. It's not just, like I said, it's not just about surprise check-ins on folks to play gotcha all the time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And look forward to, I'm hopeful that we can do some evaluation over the course of the next few years and really see the differences in outcomes in the two programs. Thank you.
Let me, just before you turn over to Phil, I just, I know it was touched on yesterday, and I trust maybe we'll get some further information, but the alignment of what recidivism, you know, how that is characterized, you know, either by practice and or by folks quoting that, and I see, and maybe you might respond, because I think that's an important element as we evaluate programs and so forth. And so again, it's not something that necessarily the county's going to define, but how we utilize that in our, you know, review and consideration for support for programs, but also their efficacy as well, so.
So thank you. And I can't speak directly to the actual definition of recidivism that the probation department or the sheriff's department uses, but there are multiple definitions of recidivism. And when we are comparing recidivism rates, we need to ensure that we're using the same definition.
Yeah, no, I could concur with that. And so I think that, you know, again, I think with footnotes, and that's important, I think, Libby, you pointed out in responding, but I think we heard that yesterday, too. So again, there may not be total alignment because different agencies may use different measures of that. But as we talk about it in this setting and consider for, you know, resource support and for any other, you know, analysis that we make, you know, engage in, that I think it's important to at least acknowledge what basis we're, you know, based it upon versus just this kind of recidivism is X and, you know, either you're doing good or you're not doing so good, and so.
I appreciate that, Chair. If I can just respond quickly, I think just to put it in practical terms, thinking about the budget cycle, it would just be great to make sure that both programs are resourced with what they need to build the information systems, have the databases, collect the outcomes, do the follow-up. That would really allow us to look into that, I think, from a public health perspective. It'd be great to see rigorous evaluation.
That's great. And we'll be having those discussions in just, in less than a month from now, we'll be obviously in the budget. I know that obviously your work as the Fab, but certainly the communication, I think, certainly leads into those discussions because it goes to what you've pointed out thus far. But I think as we look at the spectrum of service delivery and the needs in the community and so forth, I think having some ability to measure against, you know, the results over time is important. So thanks again, appreciate it, Libby, your part of the presentation. Okay, Phil, you've been waiting there patiently, so, for the rest of the story.
All right. So my name's Phil Summers. I am an emergency and addiction physician and co-chair of the Jail Health Committee on the Fab with Libby. And I'm going to zoom in on a couple of segments of kind of what we've been talking about. And the first is going to be kind of the intersections of mental health and our jails. So according to the most recent data that was available on May 4th, of the 3,336 total jail population, 64% had documented mental health needs. There were 901 people with serious mental illness and 1,237 that had mental health conditions that were not considered serious mental illness. Among the people with serious mental illness, they have an average length of stay of 261 days, and 89% are legally innocent in the pretrial status. So psychiatric services within the jail are very expensive and not terribly effective. They have been documented to be dehumanizing and in violation of detainees' constitutional rights per the May's monitoring reports. And there are extensive waitlists to gain access to 2P, which is the inpatient psychiatric facility within the jail. So a large number of these vulnerable populations with serious mental illness are placed in general population where they are receiving the substandard care and experiencing risk of suicide, abuse, and further psychiatric decompensation. So in our estimation, it should be high priority to remove people with serious mental illness from these carceral settings, if at all possible. And we recommend that the county dedicate acute psychiatric beds for this purpose while investing heavily in subacute facilities, residential bed capacity, and community-based programs to support this. There are two major gaps contributing to the impact of mental health system within the jail. One is that there are no viable decompression mechanisms to get people out of the jail and into appropriate community care settings. Previously available pathways, including the Mental Health Treatment Center, are no longer viable or lack capacity. For people who are incompetent to stand trial, such as those on a Murphy's conservatorship, they are required by law to be transferred to a county-controlled facility, so the only real option currently is the Mental Health Treatment Center. And we need a legally acceptable place to transfer where people can receive more efficacious, humane, and cost-effective care. The other major reason is the absence of prebooking diversion options for those with mental health conditions presenting with low-level offenses. Police and non-police crisis response need viable alternatives for a person having a mental health crisis. But currently, the jail and the ER are kind of the only options, and this leads inappropriate overutilization of both. And as an ER doctor who spends a lot of time thinking about our jails, neither of those are particularly effective or humane.
Phil, if I could just say, Supervisor Frost may have a question.
Please.
I just wondered if you could describe how the mental health services are demeaning in the jails?
Yeah, so I don't know if you've had a chance to review the May's consent decree monitoring reports. They provide detailed descriptions, going through a couple of case studies and describing kind of the overall conditions of the inpatient psychiatric unit within the jail.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to.
Those are their words, not mine.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Serna also has a question. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thank you so far for your presentation. We'll let you get through it. I promise.
If you do this regularly, you're getting used to the rhythm here.
You mentioned that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I heard you incorrectly, but I believe you said those that are determined to not be competent to stand trial by law have to go to a county facility?
This is a particularly complex area, and in speaking with a variety of stakeholders in this space, so there is this kind of subpopulation of people with severe mental illness that are often held pretrial or determined incompetent to stand trial, they have very limited options for placement. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about the RAND report findings regarding this population also.
I just, this is probably more for Dr. Quist when, at the right time for him to perhaps answer questions of the board. But having recently discussed with an operator that is not one for a county facility, they have mentioned that, it's a private operator, that they are going to be taking more of the Murphy's conservatorship-eligible patients. So I'm just a little confused whether or not the law says it has to be a county facility or can it be a private facility? So again, that's.
Yeah, I think it's something along the lines of county-controlled beds, but Dr. Quist can maybe elaborate on that in more detail.
Okay.
The point is the options are fairly restricted.
Yeah, thank you.
And just before, at least at some point, you may want to weigh in, because I know I've had conversations with the folks, I don't know, there's been folks in this room, though, about some of the management of folks who are incarcerated and may have fallen or some of these categories and where they were, you know, placed previously and so forth. And so I don't know if this is an appropriate time or not, but I just, I understand counsel was involved in some of the conversations as well, so.
Right, well, with regard to the Murphy's conservatorship, our office has been working with behavioral health and public health, Siobhan and Dr. Quist, to identify additional capacity because that has been the problem, and there's been additional other roadblocks that hopefully we've been able to overcome in the past couple of months. But it is definitely a challenge, and there is a great need for it, so it is a work in progress. So the points made by the speaker are well-taken.
No, I just, if I could, Ms. Chair. The only reason I want some clarity on it is because it'd be even more challenging if in fact we are so restricted that it must be schmick or nothing that, you know, that's an important distinction to make. And I see our county council is shaking their head no.
Of course, Dr. Quist can speak to that as well, but it doesn't have to be just schmick. There are other options.
There are other county-controlled beds outside of schmick, is my understanding.
Yeah, but thanks for calling attention to it, Phil, because I know that it's been a conversation that's been.
Yeah, and I know it's dynamic and very complicated, and I don't mean to gloss over it, but I only have so many minutes.
Well, I haven't put you on the clock, you're okay, so, anyway, go ahead.
So anyway, back to kind of prebooking diversion and some of the constraints at the front door. We just want to underscore and make sure that the mental health urgent care is really working towards operating at full capacity 24/7. And I know there have been recent steps to improve that capacity, and we want to lend our support of those efforts. And we also want to make a call for more short-term crisis residential options and make a call for investment in community organizations that are doing peer-based mental health support and crisis response. And additionally, you know, I know Dr. Quist spends a lot of his efforts doing this, but just making sure that we are investing in these kind of low-barrier avenues for people with kind of subacute or chronic mental health conditions so that they can be entered into comprehensive services and not get to this crisis level. The May's consent decree monitoring reports endorse an increase in community-based mental health resources as part of their consistent calls to decrease the jail population in the county's efforts towards compliance. And the recent RAND report that I, I don't know if you all have gotten to view yet, there was a statewide version and a Sacramento County version coming out shortly, but it provided some additional support for this approach. The overall conclusion of this report is that SAC County theoretically has a sufficient number of acute psychiatric beds, is the kind of the highest level of care of the lock units, such as the Mental Health Treatment Center. However, the problem is we have a shortage of, depending on the source you look at, 175 to 225 subacute beds. In practice, this means that many of our acute beds are currently occupied by patients who should be in subacute facilities, however, these subacute facilities don't exist. Instead, these subacute patients remain in acute beds for extended periods of time and create a shortage of available acute beds. The bottom line is that until we expand our subacute bed capacity, we will still have too few psychiatric beds for our community's needs. This is particularly important to consider if we want to shift patients out of our jail and into community psychiatric care, which is superior in terms of costs and outcomes. The report specifically states statewide in 2021, approximately 1,600 adults in need of psychiatric beds are residing in county jails in California. It also states that jails are not suitable to serve as psychiatric beds, and those with criminal justice involvement are in need of specifically tailored infrastructure. And the county should explore community-based and outpatient competency restoration programs, and the report offered numerous examples from around the country that could be modeled. And specifically within our county, the Empower Pilot Program run by the Public Defender and Behavioral Health is an example of a program that meets those needs. And that's a program that addresses both mental health and substance use disorders. So in order to accomplish this, we need to forecast and dedicate acute psychiatric beds for incarcerated people with serious mental illness. This will help decompress this particularly vulnerable population and resource-intensive population in a way that restores people's dignity and capacity to participate fully in their communities. So we recommend public sessions with RAND to understand their methodology and their specific recommendations for our county, and triangulating these findings with findings from the consultant reports regarding the jail population and mental health needs, specifically looking at the number of folks on 2P, the inpatient psychiatric facility within the jail, and those that are on waitlist for 2P, and use those numbers to kind of estimate the number that could be diverted into community beds if space was available. And then using this analysis, we can then dedicate an appropriate number of acute beds that can be purchased and earmarked for this justice-involved population. Several resources to kind of help build this capacity as well. I know that the Cal AIM PATH funding stream has a justice-involved capacity building program that really fits the bill here. I understand there's also some flexibility with like a I understand there's also some flexibility with like AB 109 funding that could be sourced towards these treatment options and support. And I know that Yolo and other counties have been pretty innovative in prioritizing that. And then, lastly, opting into the federal IMD waiver, which allows for reimbursement of psychiatric facilities greater than 16 beds. So, we applaud the county's recent efforts and the proposal to build the 64-bed Mental Health Rehabilitation Center, which is a subacute facility. However, this is only meeting about a third of the projected need from the documents that I was able to review. We're also in big support of Behavioral Health's efforts to mobilize the mobile crisis response, adult residential treatment, augmented board and care, and intensive placement teams. These are all steps in the right direction, and I hope they are invested in fully. And I hope that those involved with the legal system and those experiencing homelessness are prioritized for these programs. As I mentioned, Mental Health Urgent Care hopefully will be operating at full capacity and meeting the community's needs on that front, and as many instances as possible, if we can have mobile crisis and peer-based crisis response teams displacing law enforcement response for mental health crises and lifestyle violations that criminalize unhoused people. So, next slide. So, supportive housing. Fifty-two percent of individuals with misdemeanors in the jail reported housing insecurity. And unhoused people are often charged with these kind of lifestyle violations, these low-level misdemeanors that are related to poverty and lack of social supports. And sustained supportive housing offers a preventative option that supports public health outcomes and likely decreases these low-risk bookings. So, we need to minimize the structural barriers to access to housing, including RUS application processes requiring physical copies of personal documents, informal bank accounts, necessitating sobriety, and prohibiting pets and things like that. We need to expand housing dedicated for justice-involved populations. Secure housing is much less expensive than incarceration, as you know, and it can also be helpful in reducing recidivism, improving physical health, mental health, economic and legal outcomes for this population. Housing First has consistently been shown to be cost-effective, and housing access is public health.
Phil Casey, I ask you, you've used the term a couple of times, I didn't see it here, but you say lifestyle violations, I think maybe I know what you mean, but that's a term that I'm not that familiar with, so maybe...
So, it's kind of a catch-all term. I wouldn't have a specific penal code in mind, but it's a lot of the violations that people are cited with camping violations, or perhaps like, you know, using the restroom in inappropriate locations and things like...
Nuisance behaviors could rise to the level of misdemeanors, but, okay, that's what, okay, got it. Thanks.
So, lastly, data transparency. We felt strongly that we need an accessible, timely, and digestible data platform, so that the public, community stakeholders, and county officials can better understand this complex and important area of concern. In its current state, it is fragmented and rather inaccessible. We have spent the last many months parsing through more documents than I can remember and holding extensive conversations with every stakeholder across the county that we can think of. And I feel like we're only now kind of grasping the nuances and intricacies of this system, and data gaps still exist. These are some of the areas of focus that we identified to focus on, particularly with regard to health services within the jail. Responses to health service requests are currently pretty poorly documented, and anecdotally sometimes are not addressed promptly or comprehensively, but there's no real feedback or documentation mechanism for those, and that can obviously manifest in poor health outcomes. So, we also need to prioritize feedback from people who are directly impacted by these systems, and we need to do so in a way that's thoughtful and acknowledges inherent power dynamics and real fears of retaliation. So, something like an anonymous exit survey for the jail could provide some really important insights on that front. I know that the Public Safety and Justice Agency plans to kind of lead this effort in collating some of these data, and we are happy to collaborate and advise on that front, having spent a lot of time in this space. And I just also want to acknowledge several county entities have been incredibly responsive and provided really specific and detailed data, particularly Dr. Damiano, Dr. Quist, Dr. Gattari. The one exception has been the Sheriff's Office, which has been pretty unresponsive, and in our view, has kind of lacked transparency and accountability on a lot of these fronts. Obviously, they play a central role in consent decree compliance, and they haven't really demonstrated dedication to transparency or accountability. And that, for us, that does not particularly engender trust, and we're hoping that we can, we can bridge some of those gaps with the Public Safety and Justice Agency. So, lastly, just a quick summary. We ask that you invest in the Public Defender's Pretrial Program and empower it with stable funding, expanding staffing and intake capacity, and we hope that this will be on par with the general funding allotted to the probation department. And this approach should be prioritized, as we've mentioned, given its effectiveness and alignment with these public health principles. We hope that we can invest in or embark on apples-to-apples analyses of the various programs designed to reduce recidivism and implement these policies in an evidence-informed fashion. So, we need to clearly define these goals and metrics for population reduction and recidivism, and utilize those in our analyses. We need to invest in community mental health response, crisis residentials, community-based competency restoration, and expand our capacity of subacute and residential beds, so we can free up and dedicate these acute psychiatric beds for incarcerated people with severe mental illness. We need accessible and sustained supportive housing for people who are involved in the justice system. We need to access comprehensive data from all entities and inform our understanding of these issues using that data platform. We need to engage in a public review of the consultant reports related to jail population reduction and consent decree compliance in order to establish trust and transparency around these topics. And just to underscore the fact that we cannot wait for a potential long-term construction project to provide a solution to address the jail's bloated population today. We need to immediately focus on addressing the jail's very high pretrial population, reduce the overall population, while also ensuring effective connections to services that will improve outcomes and reduce the jail population in the medium to long term. Throughout our months of meetings, there has been a unifying consensus that we all wish that the jail population were smaller and that incarcerated and unhoused people could be treated with dignity and compassion. Yet, the jail population continues to swell beyond our capacity to adequately care for them, and our streets are filled with people experiencing economic marginalization and decompensated mental illness. We live in the capital of the most resource-rich state and the wealthiest country in the history of the world, but we can't incarcerate our way out of these social problems. We have some actionable opportunities to live up to our values, and as we discussed, our budget priorities equal our values. So, we need your creativity and visionary leadership to overcome these challenges, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions? I don't see anyone in the queue. So, anyway, we appreciate your portion of the presentation, serving the summary.
We'll be sticking around.
You bet. Okay. Bartle, was there anything else you wanted to conclude with? All right, so, I don't have any other speakers on this item, was there anyone? Oh, I do, I know we're going to get to our agency head here, but so, that's the fabs portion of it, and we thank you for that. I know that both Eric and Siobhan, I think, are going to make some comments as a part of the overall item here today, so, Mr. Jones, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Natoli, Board Supervisors, thank you, Public Health Advisory Board. So, I'll be speaking briefly, just from the Public Safety and Justice Agency's perspective, about a lot of the things that you've heard, and we really do appreciate the good work that the P-HAB has done approaching things through a public health lens, of which we are also bringing to the Public Safety and Justice Agency. We really do believe that the goal and the alignment for the county is about shared public safety, which, when you hear that term, and it's nationally recognized research, it's really about five key points or five principles. The first one is public health, because the public health field has much to teach about addressing issues that, if not addressed, really do affect community health. It's about well-being. The strongest communities are the safest communities, and well-being means community conditions promote mental and physical health and resilience. It's about survivors at the center. So, for far too long, justice policy and investment decisions have not really been informed by crime survivors. Breaking the cycle of harm, growing number of experts agree that incarceration as a one-size-fits-all, as you've heard here, is not the best approach for crime response. And really, breaking the cycles of harm requires a problem-solving approach where we're not working in silos. So, and then making the system work, knowing that it's not just a law enforcement or criminal justice approach. We need our social services, our other partners, to really make a difference, and that's really a big part of my task is with the Public Safety and Justice Agency. So, and our priorities are to work with county staff to reduce jail population and reduce recidivism, and you heard a lot about, a lot about that here today. So, we're really looking at existing programs that work well, maybe some enhancements, but also looking for best practices, new programs out there that can reduce jail population and recidivism. So, we really think that diversion from even getting into the system will ultimately reduce our jail population. And then, something else that really comes under a newer term called deflection, which is not even, let's say, a police officer can give a warm handoff right there in the field without even having to do a citation or an arrest, right, and really leveraging our support providers. So, speaking briefly to the P-HAB's report, we definitely agree that diversion programs are important and have to be expanded upon, especially when they revolve around mental health and substance abuse issues. We definitely agree more sobering centers need to exist, right, yet another place where, let's say, a frontline law enforcement officer can take somebody instead of incarceration or jail. So, we're working on some other new programs with probation, with all of the various criminal justice partners, about things we can do as a law enforcement community to reduce things on the front-end intake, if you will. And then, pretrial release, you've heard a lot about pretrial release programs, and I just want to reiterate that yesterday's presentation by the Public Defender and Chief Probation Officer really did highlight that they do not see each other as in a competitive role. They come from different angles based on their roles, responsibilities, and duties, but each agree that their programs should be in existence, and you also heard from the court the same, that, again, they're coming from different angles, one from more risk assessments, a risk assessment need, the other from more a holistic public health need, but both are, if you will, safety nets to keep individuals from various pathways out of incarceration that we don't have to. And when it comes to the term recidivism, we will, and I do hope to grow the Public Defender's Office pretrial program, but strategically grow it as data comes in, because you do need three years for recidivism rate data that's apples-to-apples. But both are programs that, of course, I support. So, with that, I wanted to turn it over to Siobhan for some of the social services aspects, unless there are questions for me.
We do have some questions, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Eric, I appreciate that, and really thank the presenters today. I mean, I, some really great information, I think a lot of the same conversations we're already having up here, we support your initiatives. I, Eric, I just, I appreciate you kind of laying out those five, I guess, pillars of what public safety means, because I know we're trying very hard to do more to reduce our levels of incarceration. I mean, the pretrial diversion, the prebooking diversion things you've been talking about are so desperately needed, but I'm glad you just had the mention of survivors and victims, because I tell you, I hear from my constituents, the biggest issue that concerns them is the safety in their neighborhoods, that do they feel safe? And that's a big public health issue as well, so, that we make sure people are safe, and that is also a collaborative approach. It's not just law enforcement, it's also making investments in our communities, obviously, whether that's violence prevention programs, youth programs, things like that. But I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think that's, it's always important that we keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Desmond. Any other questions or comments? If not, thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Siobhan.
Great, thank you so much. Siobhan Gattari, Health Services Director. I just wanted to, first of all, appreciate our Public Health Advisory Board. As you can see, they've done their research, and they are really experts in this field, and they really did a great job of summarizing all of the initiatives that will be really important going forward. I wanted to point out first that, just lift up to you some of the investments that your board has already made that will impact some of the recommendations that they're making, and then also kind of forecast for you some of the things that may be coming that you may see. As the board's aware, that we are currently assessing the needs of those who are incarcerated through some different studies, and then, as you know, the RAND study did come out with bed capacity, and Dr. Summers did talk about that study. We do intend to hold some public listening sessions about the RAND study as an opportunity to engage, but early days, we do know absolutely we do need more bed capacity, and Dr. Summers pointed out that we do need more subacute bed capacity, and I think that will move the needle on this population. So, on May 24th, we will be coming back to you for approval of an application that we submitted to the state for a 64-bed facility that would be a subacute facility. There are other opportunities in the future with this same pot of money that the state's released, the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program, that we will be making more applications to the state. So, once again, recognition that we do need more capacity in that space. I also wanted to lift up the investments you've made in programs such as the Wellness Crisis Call Center and Response that will be, we are in the planning phase for, that will be going live this summer, and that we intend to really use this and leverage this response as a way to divert, as was suggested. Additionally, the urgent care expansion...
Siobhan, excuse me, just, I think Supervisor Serna had a question.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Sorry to interrupt. When you mentioned the interest in further investment in subacute care and beds intended to serve that population, I think it's really important for the public's benefit to know what is kind of the clinical distinction between subacute and acute. As you know, I have been working with a constituent who has been fairly insistent over several months that some, for, you know, based on his perspective, that this county has no interest in serving what he concludes is the acute population. And I think it has to do with perhaps misunderstanding a bit the distinction between the two, so could you just briefly let us know what you mean by subacute?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I'll give it high level, and then Dr. Quist can certainly add to my definitions, but the acute level is really for folks who are in psychiatric crisis, and so, this would be a locked setting that really does look at things like danger to self or others and the ability to care for oneself based on grave disability. A subacute level is a step down from that, and these are often locked settings as well, but they don't require the same staff to client ratio, for instance, because folks may be a little bit more stabilized in those settings. And so, what we're really looking at is how, what are the needs of the population that we're trying to serve, the folks who are needing to transition out of jail? What we've identified to date, and once again, there's more assessment and analysis going on, but is that we, they probably need more subacute settings, and so, that's where we've focused some of our efforts. It doesn't mean that we don't need both and, but we just need to start where our greatest gaps and needs are. Dr. Quist, do you want to add anything?
Good afternoon, Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director. The only part, you did a great job of describing it. The only part I'd add is, just to give a little bit more of a picture of what a subacute facility looks like, it is a structured environment, so it has a lot of activities. It's intended to really focus on helping individuals develop the skills and personal resources in order to be able to return to the community. So, when we have somebody who's at an acute facility who's being discharged, if they're not going to be successful in the community, we want to make sure that they're being taken care of and building up those personal resources in order to be able to be successful in the community, and so, a subacute facility is the type of facility we would use in order to do just that.
Great, thank you.
Just on that point, Ryan, while you were there with Siobhan, I know you're going to be bringing the item to us when we next meet a couple of weeks from now, but my understanding was, you kind of alluded to that it may be a secured facility or not, but my understanding is the application that we're considering would be for a secured facility, certainly understanding the description you've just put forth in responding to Supervisor Serna. There's no question about that, is that right, for what we're looking at under the application?
Correct. We're looking, we're looking to build a secured facility.
But 64 beds that would then allow us the capacity to do the step-down, and it's been characterized to me, subacute is one way to describe it, but as a rehabilitated... characterized to me, subacute is one way to describe it, but as a rehabilitation center or facility that would then ultimately result in folks being able to step out of that setting at some juncture as well. Is that accurate?
There are a number of different kinds of subacute facilities. The one we're looking to build is, we're hoping going to be licensed as a mental health rehabilitation center.
Okay, that's good. That's important, because again, I know that I've been having some community conversations generally, and we're going to have some other conversations with, you know, community that may be the host for the potential facility. But I just wanted to be sure I was characterizing after listening here correctly. So, after having talked with you, I'm confident I've portrayed it correctly. So, thanks.
Feel free to stay if you want, Dr. Quist. I'm going to give a few more comments, but he, he's certainly the expert. So, I also just wanted to mention that in addition to some other investments you've made, Wellness Crisis Call Center, urgent care expansion, which should go to 24/7 August 1st, your investments in the Sure Sobering Center as an option for diversion as well. Also, all of the work we've been doing around leveraging CAL-AIM, both the Enhanced Care Management, and really working to put some things in place for the population that is transitioning out of incarceration to link them to services. And we do intend to go live with some of those things even before January 1st, which is when that population goes live. We've also made expansions to our peer classifications in order for us to be able to expand our peer program efforts in the community, as was suggested. And then investments in diversion such as Laura's Law, when the board chose to adopt that. And that will also be coming online this summer. We also, you also made an investment in the expansion of full-service partnerships for the forensic population in January when we came to you for the request under MHSA. So, we have more ability to serve this population. And in the budget, you will see some requests to expand our substance use residential treatment capacity for both adults and children. As well as the housing and homeless investments you've made through ARPA and through general fund dollars, we're also going to be leveraging the CAL-AIM community supports, where the managed care plans will be paying for some of the housing and navigation supports, as Dr. Summers suggested, to start to reduce the barriers to helping folks who have been involved in the criminal justice system to get housed. And then the board has approved contracts with Project Exodus, both through the Public Defender's Program as well as through Department of Human Assistance. And Project Exodus is focusing specifically on rehousing of this population. Finally, I'll just say, we will be opting into the IMD waiver, and that is something that was suggested as a recommendation. And then also, your investment in the Social Health Information Exchange can be used to leverage some of the data transparency efforts, as well as being a dashboard, public-facing dashboard for some of the work of the May's consent decree. And I know Alameda County, who has the same model for a social health information exchange, does leverage their she in order to, they have a consent decree as well that they use as a public-facing dashboard. So, we will be looking at that. So, that's around the alternatives to incarceration. And I just wanted to make a few comments about the school-based mental health services as well. Do you want me to do that first, or do you have other things on alternatives that you'd like to mention?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, I wanted to just mention that DHA, for the past several years, has really had a strong partnership with SCOE, both all of our divisions within health services, but really the county at large has been working with SCOE on a number of efforts. So, as was lifted up, we've commissioned a 10-year mental health and wellness plan by, that will be released probably here in May. And that's going to really help to inform some of these efforts going forward. And a lot of the recommendations you heard today are things that will come out in that 10-year wellness plan. Also, wanted to thank the board for support for the Youth Mental Health Board that Supervisor Kennedy lifted up. I think it is an absolutely essential way to bring youth voice into this equation and make sure that they are integrated into our planning efforts. We've had a partnership between our primary care center and Department of Health Services and SCOE to actually place clinicians, as you heard, in the schools. This year, we had 22 clinicians. You'll see in the budget that there will be an expansion to 40 clinicians in next school year. And that is really funded through Medi-Cal billing dollars as well as grant funding. So, we're not asking for a general fund for that. So, that's an exciting, exciting new initiative that we're doing. Also, wanted to mention that our Behavioral Health Division already partners with the schools on specialty mental health care, not only to create easy pathways for kids and families to get into specialty mental health care through our community-based organizations, but also in some cases, we place clinicians in the schools that bill through our Behavioral Health Division to be able to see kids. And then DHS and SCOE have been working collaboratively with our managed care plans on a program called SBHIP, our School-Based Health Incentive Program, that will actually be bringing $16 million into SCOE to be able to expand all of these efforts, similar to the ones you heard about today. We're also currently exploring other ways of funding peer-to-peer programs, mentoring programs, and community health worker programs on school campuses as a sustainable funding source. And that's really our goal, is to partner some of these recommendations with what the sustainable state and federal funding sources are that are coming our way. And then finally, I did want to just mention, thank you for the, Sonal's recommendation about the app, the Grace app. We are actually expanding that Grace app beyond SAC City to other places. And Dr. Quist's team is using some mental health block grant dollars currently to do that. So, very exciting. So, I will just say, once again, thank you to the Public Health Advisory Board. I think they bring a wealth of expertise, and we will continue to partner with them as we continue to, on your behalf, expand these efforts in the schools and to our forensic populations. So, appreciate that.
Great. Thanks, Siobhan. And they're applauding. Just real quick, Siobhan, if I could, so, you said, what did you say was going live August 1st? What was the, it was earlier?
August 1st will be the assisted outpatient treatment, Laura's Law, and then also the urgent care 24/7.
The urgent care 24/7, that's why, yeah.
We had hoped to stand that up, as you recall, a year ago when you approved the budget, hoped to stand it up in January. Due to COVID and significant workforce crisis and shortages, our operator was not able to do that. But August 1st is our date.
Okay. Keep a surprise of that. So, very good. Any other questions or comments, Siobhan? Very good. Okay. Ryan, nothing else? You covered it all? Okay. All right. So, if there's no other questions or comments, I don't know, do we have folks on the phone? I believe we do. So, I didn't have anybody in chambers signing up for this item. So, we'll, again, with thanks to all the presenters, we'll go to our, go to the phone lines.
Please send the first caller. Hi, caller. Please start your public comment. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi. I really want to appreciate, I really appreciate this diligent report that was done by the Public Health Advisory Board. And want to just kind of chime in on a few, like, a few comments that have been made, both, like, you know, that connect back to what was said yesterday. I noticed that Supervisor Serna, who is, who I'm a constituent of, keeps missing the point in saying that PD's program relies on probation programs, on the probation program that worked. It's simply false. It does not rely on probation to succeed. It relies upon a dynamic of power and violence, and like, that creates an unjust barrier for people who have better, like, who would have better outcomes if they were simply given direct access to the public defender's custody. It doesn't have to be this way. And like, it's, it's a choice, not like, not a, just the way it is. As we made, like, as was made clear by P-HAB, if all pre-trial were housed under Public Defender, we wouldn't need probation. Many people who are now on probation pre-trial would have been released, like, on their own recognizance if probation weren't involved, or would be connected to services if Public Defender connected with more people. And probation's program is, has , has shown yesterday inefficient. It leads to higher rates of reincarceration regardless of how you define it. And like, they also do not share the same level of data that Public Defender does. So, rather than getting defensive and repeating this false assertion that probation is necessary, how about we circle back with the community's real concerns? And ask the rest question to Chief Marlon Yarber, who runs the department that receives far more federal fund money than Public Defender, and yet spends over 80% of his, spent over 80% of his pre-trial pilot funding on staffing over services. We took, like, you didn't do, like, this board chose not to do that yesterday. Instead, just creating leading questions in order to make this false assertion that probation is necessary. These programs are not creating cooperation with each other, and you all know it. So, next, I want to leave this, my comment with two key questions. The first being for county, like, for county council, and I hope that members of this board actually ask them, why did county council not be transferring people to the county mental health treatment center? Why would you, why would the county remove that option that, like, that is proven, that could actually help to reduce the jail population, as was recommended? And another question for everyone in this room, with, like, with, who works in the county to consider, why is Sacramento County so obsessed with funding law enforcement institutions, life probation, without the data-driven evidence to back it up? If you, like, if you don't have the data, and like, there's, like, your department is getting general fund money, isn't with, like, real data, then you need to actually, like, require that, just like Public Defender has been doing. It's not hard. Please do better. And really, again, appreciate that, like, that we're talking about this. Let's really get in and put our, like, put our money where the, like, with the program that actually has efficient and equitable out, like, better, more equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, next caller.
Please send the next caller.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. I just want to, I just want to point out again that I appreciate the caller's passion and willingness to focus on the subject. But I just completely disagree with the, the assessment that he's made, because it completely ignores the third most, perhaps most critically important component, part of how a pre-trial release program is going to be effective, and that is the courts. And we heard very clearly yesterday that the courts are reluctant to even consider pre-trial release if there isn't some type of risk assessment policy in place and practice in place. And that is conducted by the probation department. That's why I continue to insist that they are not mutually exclusive, but they are mutually reliant, to some extent, on each other. And the most effective way that we're going to accomplish what I think the carcerate and others advocate for is to acknowledge that. So, you can continue to have your opinions about it, but I just firmly disagree with the, the premise that somehow probation should not be a component part of that.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, next caller.
Hi, caller. Please start your public comment. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. This is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed psychologist in independent practice. I'm president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association. I'm an appointed member of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. I'm a resident of District 2. As a county mental health board member, I can attest that, that both youth mental health and correctional health prevention of and alternatives to incarceration, they're both areas of concern for our board as well. We have submitted our own recommendations regarding youth mental health that are very much aligned with those put forward by P-HAB today. And we're also currently examining behavioral health services provided to criminal justice-involved individuals in the Sacramento County jails, and hope to be making some appropriate recommendations in the near future. Our boards heard presentations from forensic behavioral health, the public defender's office, El Hogar, as well as P-HAB. Additionally, we've met with Los Angeles County Rentry Health Collaborative. So, I can say, as a community mental health advocate, with all of my experience and research in this area, I strongly support the specific recommendations made by P-HAB related to the investments needed to promote sustainable reductions in SAT County jail population. These recommendations that are being put forth support the county's goals of reducing jail population, promoting public safety, and addressing the racial inequity that's within the criminal justice system. Population in SAT County jails are 38% black and 70% people of color. So, prioritizing these investments needed to promote sustainable reduction fulfills the goals that this board set forward November 16th, 2020, and that resolution to declare racism a public health crisis that we're still waiting to see some action being taken on. Additionally, these specific recommendations that are coming forward by P-HAB address concerns raised by Supervisor Kennedy yesterday, which I'm so appreciative of during the board meeting on the pre-trial support programs, on how can Sacramento County divert its residents from being incarcerated in the first place? We're 82% of the current population in SAT County jails are there pre-trial. 62% of those folks are diagnosed with a mental illness. And 52% of those individuals are experiencing homelessness. So, prioritizing funding for what's referred to as a three-legged stool, housing, mental health treatment, and substance abuse services can divert our most vulnerable residents from being incarcerated in the first place. I implore this board to keep these recommendations in mind when you are making your budget for the next fiscal year, to not only stand up these programs that will divert our residents, but also to allow the county to offer competitive compensation packages that can attract service providers who will provide these much-needed services, because we are experiencing a behavioral health workforce crisis. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to be able to speak with you two days in a row. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Corinne. Thank you for calling in, your comments.
And that concludes your public comment.
Okay. All right. Again, bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. If not, oh, I'm sorry.
Just again, to thank the members of our, are we calling it P-HAB or FAB?
FAB.
FAB, okay. FAB. Members of our FAB E-LIS group here for all their work. I think in my eleven and a half years on the board, this is probably as deep a dive as I've seen P-HAB take, you know, and really appreciate the fact that they've taken the opportunity so seriously. I've had a chance to meet individually with FAB members and to do some virtual Zooms. And I think the, the fact that they are as committed as they are is apparent in the work product that has been produced. And so, I fully expect that in the course of our budget hearings next month, that once again, we'll be making reference to, to that work product. And, you know, the fact that we have the great opportunity to lean it a little bit on the expertise that they've obviously demonstrated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Serna. Yeah, I would just join, and you've heard from some of us already today, but thank you for your thoughtful and very in-depth work, insightful. And certainly, I think the, you know, comments and suggestions and recommendations as you brought forward, obviously, have been taken into, you know, consideration, will continue to be taken into consideration. And I want to thank Siobhan and Eric both for their respective roles, and certainly Mr. Quist as well. Again, I think, you know, further, you know, advancing the working relationships, but also, you know, where necessary, you know, calling upon this board to look at in our responsibilities, how we, you know, certainly budget, but also then give guidance relative to some of the initiatives, which I think, again, are beginning to prove very, very helpful, very valuable, and with some very positive outcomes. And more work lies ahead, but I want to thank each of you who are professionals in your own right for the time you dedicate, certainly to your work in the role of a, of a public health advisory board member, but also your role in the community. Caller's obviously called in, and there are others on your, on your advisory committee as well. So, we thank all of you and appreciate you being here. Thanks to our professional staff. And again, we'll have a further opportunity in just a few weeks, obviously, as we look at our budget recommendations will be forthcoming, and certainly deliberate the recommended budget in, in early June. So, again, there was no action required here today, but wanted to say thanks and accept the report. And we look forward to continuing to work with our Public Health Advisory Board members, certainly our community and our staff on trying to address and bury serious challenges, but one that I think offer a lot of hope here today, just in the discussions that we've had relative to our young people, to those who are involved in the criminal justice system, but also just in work to try to have a healthier community for each and every one of us. So, so, thanks again. So, so thanks again. And Anne, did you want to make any comments at all? Oh, okay. All right. With that, then, you're welcome to stay, but we're going to move into our, our next item, um, which is item number three, and I'll have, uh, I didn't have any other comments on this one, so item number three, three o'clock item.
Sanction encampment sites workshop continued from April 26, 2022, item number 68.
Very good. And I see Emily coming to the podium, so I guess you must be taking the lead on this, so.
Uh, yes, with Jeff.
Hi, Mr. Gasway as well.
But I'm gonna take the start. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. I'm Emily Halken, the Director of Homeless Initiatives. If you could pull up the PowerPoint associated with this, that'd be helpful. So today's workshop is at your request to provide an update to the board on our ongoing efforts to identify land to develop new sheltering opportunities throughout the county. In ongoing conversations we've had here with you on this topic, we've continually heard a commitment from the Board of Supervisors to serve, to try to develop sheltering options that serve those who are the most difficult to serve in our community, but also that provide relief to the communities where currently there is unsanctioned homelessness and some associated nuisances. And so while today we are focusing on sheltering, I also want to orient and remind you and the public that this is just one part of a much larger county strategy to address the, the implications of homelessness in our community that includes investments in intensive, multidisciplinary outreach teams, flexible supportive rehousing programs, systemic improvements and coordination through the continuum of care, as well as bringing resources to address the impacts of unsheltered homelessness while we work to build up the system to prevent and reduce homelessness. In addition, today we're going to focus primarily on sites for new sheltering programs, and this is a very significant new investment from the board, but we are also currently committed to, and I believe remain committed to, supporting shelters throughout our county. Um, in addition to some of the site-based programs that many of you are familiar with, Mather, some of our family shelters, et cetera, we are continuing our investment and increasing those investments in scattered site shelters, which while we can't talk about them and locate them on the map, are indeed scattered throughout the county and serving folks in many of, in many of your neighborhoods. And so the efforts today really should be seen as an augmentation to all this other work that you are continuing to work on. So more specifically, in regards to how we approach looking at new sites, the board has provided direction to us that we are to aim to serve those that are most difficult to serve within the existing homeless system of care for a variety of reasons. And we are to look to provide sheltering opportunities throughout the county and all parts of the county, and ensuring that there's opportunities for people to seek shelter in the communities where they feel a part of that. But that as we do that, that we are ensuring that we're not over-concentrating sheltering opportunities in lower-income communities of color or other disenfranchised communities. In accordance with the shelter crisis that you adopted in February, we are to be moving as quickly as possible to identify, construct, and operate these new shelter sites. And we are to align the lessons that we learned during COVID-19, focusing predominantly on non-congregate sheltering options. And of course, not to be last, but just as important, all of this is to, to underscore that we are to work closely with the surrounding communities, businesses, residents, others in the community, as early as possible in these efforts. All of this is with the goal of ensuring that these new sites, as we propose them and bring them forward to you, are viewed as an asset to the communities in which they are cited, and that really they are intended to make a demonstrable difference to those communities who currently are seeing unsanctioned homelessness throughout the, throughout the county. And it's important to note that in our current landscape, the ability of the county to limit unsanctioned encamping in public areas is very tightly tied to its ability to offer real-time sheltering and housing to meet the needs of those who are living unsheltered. And so we hope that these sites that we're going to talk about today and future safe-stay opportunities will provide significant new capacity in the county that is needed, both to provide a real pathway out of homelessness for people who are suffering on the streets, but just as importantly, to allow mechanisms to provide more relief to communities. So I want to quickly review what we mean when we talk about safe-stay communities or safe parking communities. First and foremost, these are not self-governed sites. These are where somebody might just stake a tent and, and take up residence. These are professionally managed and supported with extensive and ongoing services, 24/7 onsite staffing by professional CBOs, community-based organizations, with extensive experience serving these populations. They are prioritized to serve those living unsheltered in the community in which they are located, and access is by invitation only. People cannot queue up in front of them and wait in line or knock on a door to get access. They are very intentionally as low barrier as possible, and what we mean by that is that we're aiming to serve those folks who previously have said no to other offers, who have been unwilling or unable to engage in traditional services. These are the people that probably are some of the complaints that we're hearing, and they're of most concern to the community. We want to welcome them in.
Emily, if I could just pause for a minute, I think supervisor, sir, had a question.
Thank you. On that second bullet, Emily, are we instituting any kind of rigid definition of what the host community is geographically? Is it a, is it a mile radius? Is it, um, do we look at a neighborhood map that is commonly accepted as the community?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great question. I think it would really depend on the site and probably needs to be very site-specific. We certainly will, as we start citing them, look at the first sort of concentric ring of outreach and go outwards from there, but I don't think it's the same definition for each site because it'll have to be very community-specific.
And then in terms of the, um, the referral service, the invitation, does that, is that an invitation that I assume is done literally in person, onsite, wherever the unsheltered constituent may be?
Yeah, the intention would be working through our encampment services teams, who are multidisciplinary teams of county staff and contracted staff, as well as depending on the site, community-based organizations who know these folks. So going out into the places where people are currently camping, engaging them, discussing what this means, inviting them in, and then actually helping with the transition.
And is there, is there a way, do we have the, the infrastructure, the system, um, set such that if I'm a business or a resident in a particular community, and I have seen, um, over the course of days or weeks or months even, the same individual or groups of individual, more or less in the same location, can that resident or business, will they have some ability to, um, you know, correspond or speak with whomever would navigate someone to the site?
Yeah. What we've talked about is connecting through the good neighbor policy, creating an onsite point person for probably the operator, the onsite operator, because they're 24/7, they work, you know, they're seven days a week, that could then connect with the outreach teams. In addition, before any of the sites open, we've envisioned spending, you know, a good amount of time, a few weeks to a month, in the community, identifying people before the door ever opened. So yes, we can create those mechanisms for businesses or other residents.
I think if that was, um, a real intensive part of what we're trying to do, that at the outset may ameliorate some of the concerns that, you know, we should expect are going to come from some of these communities where we have the opportunity to locate safe-stay sites, so that there's a feeling of investment, that there's a feeling by the neighboring residents or businesses that this is actually intended not just to serve and get someone out of the circumstance of being unsheltered in the community, but it's intended to directly limit the impacts that are being felt by that resident or that business. I think if that has really stood up in a, in a big way, that helps, I think immensely on the front end.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you.
Emily, before you move on, just, um, and maybe for, when Jeff gets to do his part of the presentation, you mentioned a point about, in your, just your site surveys, you're looking through some of the criteria and what you're trying to achieve under the, obviously the board's, uh, direction, about overconcentration. And I guess I'm curious, as you look at, quote, viable sites or sites, if, and again, you mentioned, you know, scatter sites aren't, we're not putting those addresses out publicly, but we have scatter site shelters. I wanted to know, one, how many we have, because that one, last count was 14 or 15, but those can accommodate up to six people. What is our number right now?
I believe, and I believe we're at 115 beds, which, if I could do the math, I think that's 20 or so homes, and I believe we just got authority to add three more, so somewhere between 20 and 30.
Okay, because that number's not widely acknowledged, I don't think. And again, that's part of the direction came out of this board's work, certainly Anne and Bruce were the forefront of that, uh, you know, going back five years ago. And, you know, it's taken us time, and I think it's important to note that, that it's not some, um, you know, you know, large shelter, but, you know, six at a time, working with our, you know, operators that provide the services and programs and so forth, and they are in neighborhoods and communities, both in the unincorporated area, but in the incorporated area, incorporated areas as well, and so.
It's 20 sites, by the way.
It's 20 sites.
Yeah, I was just going to confirm that.
Is that right? Sorry, my math at the dais is my not.
No, it's pretty good.
My apologies.
I was just going to confirm what the supervisor just said. We were at 15 for a while, but then you might recall, we added some in this year's budget, and you'll likely see some discussion about further expansion in the, in the budget discussions we're going to have.
Okay. But again, that was, you know, initiative that, you know, came out of the discussions we had several years ago, and, you know, we've ramped it up, we've had to make sure we've had the support services to back that up, but also to have, you know, willing, you know, landlords, and certainly in a rental market that's very, very tight, it's probably been, you know, difficult, but not to concentrate. I mean, going back to the point, that was what got me on the point to begin with, is that to recognize that, you know, folks, uh, you know, in a neighborhood setting with the proper amount of services and so forth, and again, a lot of these are transitional, they, you know, they're not there on a permanent basis, but it helps folks to, you know, cope with some of the challenges they have, but also in a way that doesn't, you know, it doesn't present it as a 100-bed shelter, um, or, you know, whatever, pick your number. And I just wanted to point that out because I think it's important. I didn't see it in the staff report, but you alluded to it in your comments. The other thing I just wanted to ask about, though, kind of this concentration issue, as you, you know, vetted, you know, all the county sites with the criteria that you outlined, and again, it'll be expanded upon, did you look at where existing, you know, not just in, in neighborhoods that might have socioeconomic aspect to them, or some other, you know, underserved and/or environmental justice aspect, did you look at where existing services and then, you know, not necessarily at the safe-stay, you know, first entry into the system level, but over the spectrum, did you look at that as a criteria? Because, and again, I'm going to give you a precursor to what I may ask about later on, but I'm just curious, how did that factor into your looking at the viability or lack of viability of sites?
Right. That's a great question. So today's, the today's view of the sites started with county, and this is a little bit of a preview, but it's okay.
No, I know.
It's okay. Of county-owned sites only factored in objective criteria that are land-based, and so the overlay of that would come after we've heard feedback from you. So we haven't yet taken those steps.
Okay.
I'm just recognizing that that is something that as sites come up, uh, as a reality, that we would have to check in.
Okay. Well, again, I just, and that will help me in how I'm going to approach my comments later on, but I just, I wanted to know, because you touched on it, and I didn't know, it wasn't mentioned the criteria as to whether, obviously proximity to services, and, you know, things that make sense from a standpoint of trying to deliver the services and stand the site up, but also then how that relates to what's already in place, either known or maybe not known in some cases, but for the most part, things we're going to know about as it relates to existing programming and units, housing that's available for folks across the spectrum of homeless. So, okay.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Emily.
Yes, okay. And then finally, on the operations, which actually dovetails nicely into the conversation around scattered site, is that these safe-stay communities are very purposely oriented towards housing exits, just like the scattered sites. It's been one of the great successes of that program. This would be both directly through the onsite operator, as well as through very purposeful partnerships with other service providers in the community. There's also some physical distinctions related to safe-stay communities. I know we had a little bit of this conversation a couple of weeks ago, and we'll have some more as sites come forward. But as we started thinking about standing up new sites, the county has chosen to focus on developing them with what we're calling sleeping cabins, some might call them a tiny home, for many reasons which are listed here. The first, as I said earlier, non-congregate sheltering in a post-COVID world is really preferred, and in some instances, based on funding, may be required. I'm starting to see funding requirements lean, lean very heavily towards this. And not just because of COVID, but it provides a sense of security and safety to guests, and we saw this during our COVID times with PRK, that people who previously had said no did say yes when they were offered something that provided this sense of security and safety. In contrast to other ways you could do safe-stay type things, using tents or other types of facilities, we believe that the sleeping cabins, most of them, the products that we've looked at are all weather-resistant and temperature-controlled. So the ability for somebody to stay indoors during the heat of the summer, the coldness of the winter, when you have air conditioning or heat, is, is much higher. Certainly, they're easier and probably align a little bit better with our building code requirements using, using a sleeping cabin, and they fit better into a community. The aesthetic of them is a bit more pleasing. It, it signals a change from somebody sleeping in a tent on the side of the road to some, to moving into housing.
Emily, just excuse me, supervisor Desmond, I keep interrupting you, but.
That's okay.
Thank you. Yeah. We'll all have a lot more comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Emily. You, you probably have the toughest job of anybody in the county right now.
I don't know about that, but thank you.
With this issue, I mean, it is just such, I mean, obviously, the most difficult issue that, that we face and our constituents face by and large, at least, you know, my constituents certainly. And, and, you know, I really appreciate your work. You and I talk all the time about this, about what's going to work, what's not going to work, what approach should we take, the, the intersection between the housing needs and behavioral health needs, I mean, just so many aspects, and you've educated me an awful lot. And I've also been educated a lot by a lot of our, our, our partners in the community, advocates in the community, the homeless themselves in my conversations. And so specifically about this sleeping cabins, and I agree with you, I mean, you know, you hear so many times from folks experiencing homelessness that they, they're scared to go into a congregate shelter facility, and I get that. But I want to be, are we, is, is the non-congregate sheltering option going to be the exclusive approach we take, or might there be situations where we could incorporate maybe a, a congregate aspect for maybe certain populations? Because some people I talk to, and, you know, looking at our, our county CEO, we've talked about some, you see some groups where they want to be together, kind of in, in a certain situation, more like a, almost like a tent-type environment. What do you think, what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, no, I did not mean to mean that it's the exclusive way. I just think, and we certainly are not looking to, you know, remove any of our current congregate shelters, and should an opportunity come forward for a congregate facility that makes sense from a physical standpoint, from a community standpoint, from a funding standpoint, we would always explore it. And I do agree with you, especially some of our sub-populations, that you see folks moving out of encampments together, and they've formed a sense of community, and maintaining that community is important for their, you know, for their recovery and for their connection to services. So no, it's not the only thing, and we are always open to new ideas.
Okay, great. I appreciate you saying that, because that was just something I was thinking, and it's also obviously a little more expensive, obviously, to do the non-congregate model. And I think, obviously, whatever we need to do to incentivize more folks to come into these kinds of safe-stay communities where they can access services and, and take that first step into transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, the treatment and services that they need is the, and while at the same time being that net benefit to the surrounding community. I mean, that, that is our objective, and whatever it's going to take for us to get there. So, okay, all more questions, I'm sure.
That's fine. Great. And so on the products themselves, I know we had a little bit of conversation the other week, and we'll continue to have them. There are, we are continuing to explore, we being, Jeff and I and some of our colleagues, various manufacturers, there's, there's quite a, there's quite a new industry out there for this type of thing. Some of the benefits that we're looking for as, as we explore is the ability to quickly activate the, the, the sleeping cabins, as well as the mobility of them. Some of them really provide opportunities to quickly stand up and quickly stand down so that the sites themselves can be temporary, as well as the stay for the person living in them. The approach that I just talked about, both the operational approach and the facility approach, really helped to inform the types of sites that we've looked for, and we already said a little bit about this, but just to underscore some of the things that we looked at from an objective criteria, and certainly have more to look at as sites rise to the top. The first thing is I do want to state is not say down here, but we, we have started our search primarily in the unincorporated county. That does not mean that we're not open to and willing to partner with, with many of our cities, but the unincorporated county is where we can drive development in a way that, that is a little bit more, a little quicker. So the preferences that we looked for in sites, and we tried to keep it as broad as possible, this is sort of our, our first winnowing down, and so with your input today, we may add some different criteria and winnow it down a little bit more. And the first thing we looked at is we'd prefer at least one acre in size. You will see some parcels that are a little bit less, but the. You will see some parcels that are a little bit less, but the preference would be at least an acre, that the site be flat. Pavement is ideal. If there's pavement, it's definitely not a requirement. The second thing is that there's close access to basic utilities. So we can bring electricity, ideally water and sewer to the sites. You know, bringing in infrastructure, as Jeff can give a lot more detail, to a site that doesn't have it adds exorbitant amounts of costs and time. Third, as I already said, is we are looking for sites that are proximate to where unsanctioned encampments currently are. We know that we're more likely to be successful to engage folks to come inside if we are offering them shelter in the community where they currently live. And then lastly, is proximity to services, whether that be transit or healthcare or other types of social services. We want people to engage in the communities where they're being sheltered and that they're able to receive the services close by. With that said, no site is perfect and probably no site checked off every single box perfectly. So as we looked through them, we looked for the ones that met the most of these criterias or that we felt we could work through, through where there was deficiencies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sir, sorry.
Thank you. Real quick, Emily, the bullet about looking at locating near unsanctioned encampments, that seems to be a bit of a double-edged sword because, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there are some instances where you might have a site that has stood up. The unsanctioned nearby encampment perhaps doesn't necessarily go away because the occupants don't meet the criteria or refuse to take advantage of the offer to go into the safe-stay site. And because this is obviously not a, it's not a locked campus, safe-stay campuses would not be locked, is there, are we seeing, especially with regard to the city of Sacramento's experience, any problems where you have nearby unsanctioned camps, especially with no rules to be followed, adversely affecting the ability of folks that are in nearby safe-stays that perhaps want to get sober, perhaps want to not be too far away from, you know, their friends or what have you? Because I think if we don't kind of approach it with some honesty about whether or not that's an achievable goal, that is for the unsanctioned camps to morph into the safe-stays to some extent, the community may say, may point to the unsanctioned camps and say, see? We told you, it's not having the effect you said it would. And I'm thinking specifically about like the WX experience at the end of, near the Caltrans property at the west, sorry, east end of X Street.
Yeah, Alhambra.
Yeah, Alhambra. There's that, you know, complex of over-under passes, and there's been an encampment under one of them that has been there for probably well over a year that has actually grown. And so that's the kind of expectation I think we need to somehow manage in our messaging. While I do appreciate kind of the intent to cite the safe-stays relative to the unsanctioned encampments, I think it is a bit of a double-edged sword, so just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, yeah. And I think that, I don't know the particularities about the, I have seen that growth, and I don't know if it's associated, if it's people who have been turned away, I don't know. But that's, you know, I sort of alluded to earlier, is that this is also part of a two-sided coin, right? In order for us to be able to manage encampments, you have to have the shelter. But I hear what you're saying about potential unintended consequences, yes. Okay. So as we said, ooh, we started our search with county-owned land, but as you will soon see, limiting ourselves to county-owned land is unlikely to be able to meet all of the priorities that we just talked about, specifically as regards to geographic dispersment. So given this simultaneous to our search of county-owned land, we've also, the county real estate staff have also been actively looking at privately-held land for either lease or purchase. And each of these approaches comes with its own benefits and challenges that I just really want to highlight a little overview before Jeff takes over and dives deep into the actual sites. Certainly, county-owned land is the quickest and the cheapest option, right? We don't need to negotiate with a private landowner, and there's no additional cost to lease or acquire the land. However, as you are going to see, while we do own a significant amount of land, most of it, at our assessment currently, is not available or viable for the types of safe-stay sites that we are trying to stand up. And it certainly is limited in certain districts within the county more than others. And so as we look at privately-owned land, both leasing and purchasing are options available for us. And the site that we just talked about a few weeks ago came under the leasing category. But generally, while staff are negotiating real estate transactions, whether a lease or a sale, we are prohibited from discussing these sites publicly, which creates some additional challenges as we want to vet these very publicly. Leasing, of course, can be much, much quicker if there is a willing and a flexible landowner, and the lease rate is within the authority that the Director General Services has. We can execute leases very quickly if we want to. They also definitely signals the community a temporal nature of a safe-stay community because leases come to an end, and then the land transfers back to its intended use. However, this expediency can be seen on one side of the coin as very beneficial, but it also creates challenges in that there have been instances where a property owner, once they agree to a lease term, they want a very quick turnaround on that lease, and they want to very quickly execute that lease, which makes deep community engagement challenging. Unlike leasing, purchasing, of course, signals a much longer-term commitment, and it also allows us flexibility. We're no longer subject to the wills of a landowner. We are the landowner, and we can do with the land as we see fit within, you know, zoning and planning regulations. However, purchasing land certainly will create the most, the biggest expense. It adds a huge expense to any of these sites. And sometimes the actual process for the county to purchase real estate can be slow. And so that, in some ways, works against the board's goal to be expedient and quick in standing some of these sites up. So overall, the approach that we use, whether it's county land, leased land, or purchased land, really impacts how we can and how we approach engagement of the community. And so just wanted to keep that in your back mind as we start talking through sites. We're going to start with the county-owned sites, and then we're going to talk a little bit about some that are on our radar that are not county-owned. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, who's going to go through the county sites.
Good afternoon, Chairman and tolling members of the board. Jeff Gascoigne, Director General Services. So I thought to start, we would go through all 1,673 lines on Attachment 1 and cross them off as we go.
That's why we allowed three days for the hearing, Jeff, so you could start.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, those sites on Attachment 1. Supervisor Kennedy made a request to go through county-owned sites that were at my fingertips. They weren't really at my fingertips. It was a process to put that list together and be able to go through that list. So one of the things that, when we went through the, all those, embedded those sites, we actually sat in a conference room with a GIS map. And I think you mentioned yesterday, Supervisor Sherna, about imprinting some of these things on GIS and using that to our advantage. So we did use that to our advantage in this case. And we first started off eliminating all of the regional parks and airport sites. Some of the airport sites have restrictions from FAA and other things, and we did not really want to recommend putting a site within, you know, the American River Parkway or those things. So we eliminated those right off the bat. Then we went through and eliminated sites that were either drainage ditches, stormwater retention, or part of a waterway. And then, you know, there were some parcels that were a potential future library site or things like that that we went through and eliminated those as well, along with some of the sites that were just too small or odd-shaped. So parcels that are located in areas of the county where it's, there's no current significant unsheltered homeless and/or too far from, removed from services. So we ended up with 15 viable sites. And so I'm going to kind of walk through those sites now. So in District 1, there's 700 North 5th Street, which is currently an existing shelter. It also houses the Sheriff's Department program.
Work release.
Work release program. So one of the things that we're doing is we're working with the Sheriff's Department to relocate the work release program. And by doing that, it will free up, I believe it's five dorm-style congregate setting that were originally used as dorms when the program had people stay overnight. So it'll free up those five dorms for another use, whether we expand the existing shelter or use it for another county use, it'll free that up. The other site is the Clerk Recorder's Building just down the street here. And, yes?
Supervisor Kennedy, I think you had a question.
On the North 5th Street. So half of it's used right now as a, for homeless sheltering, and it's operated by the City of Sacramento.
Correct.
And there was a question of whether or not they could increase capacity. There was some issues with TIs and all that, that would have to be made for ingress, egress for fire and all that. And those discussions were going on. Where'd that land?
We ended up, we did increase capacity.
Okay.
Without having to do TIs, we got through, we jumped those hurdles and got through that.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the Clerk Recorder's Building is another building. It's a little awkward, and so we still need to look into that a little better.
You're talking about, you're talking just a block and a half away from here?
Yes, yes. In District 3, there's a site we're currently vetting, which is Site 12. We're also looking at some sites 13 through 15 at Watten Roseville. And then there's a small remnant site in Fair Oaks at Site 16, which is about a half an acre that we still need to look into.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond, good. Rich, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff. And I just want to underscore this, and I think, should underscore a few points as we go through this presentation today, because I know there will be probably a lot of people in my district when they see five sites identified here that will be apoplectic about that and very concerned. And just to be clear, as Supervisor Natoli had kind of referenced before, these do not, these are sites where we have not applied that kind of general principle about overconcentration and things like that, correct? I mean, these are really based on those physical attributes, characteristics of these sites.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Just want to just make that very, very clear.
Supervisor, if I could just emphasize that point.
Please do, Bruce.
We're just providing feedback to the board, as I requested, about what we have that the county owns that could be considered. As far as this goes, we have not made any sort of steps towards these except the ones that Emily will identify, but for that very reason, we were concerned that we didn't want to give the wrong message here on where we stand on these sites. So your point's well taken, and I just wanted to make sure that was understood.
Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate that.
Yes, and I'm going to concur with all of that and state that we will be seeking some direction from you about which sites we should or could explore further.
And thank you. And I don't want anybody to get the impression that I'm not supportive of this effort and identifying sites to help provide relief to the unsheltered while providing relief to communities. I mean, that's absolutely my priority. But I also want to make it very clear to the public who are listening, we will not be moving forward with any sites until, unless and until there is robust public outreach, community input. And there are lots of opportunities for that, to help tailor sites to really what the unique needs are of the community. So just want to use that as an opportunity to put that out there. Thank you.
Absolutely correct, absolutely correct. And then in District 5, we've identified potential sites, potential county-owned sites at Mather. And we all know that we have Mather Community Campus, and we should be coming back to the board in another month or two with some recommendations for the Mather Community Campus Master Plan. And then we've also done a potential site is the corner of Kiefer and Bradshaw, which is the old animal care site.
If I could, thanks, Jeff. And I appreciate the comments Bruce made, and I know that, you know, staff, certainly I've had some conversation as this report was out a few weeks ago when we were going to hear it the first time. I just wanted to say on the overconcentration, you're seeking information on this, and again, I've spoken several times over the course of many months about looking at the utilization and capacity, certainly for safe-stay, but for housing to complement what we have at Mather Community Campus. And we've got 296 units out there now, including women and children. We have Volunteers of America that has some of the single persons. We have county-operated program. We have foster youth. But all told, there's 446 units, counting Veterans Village, which is permanently supportive housing, 100 units, plus 50 units of transitional, all of either formerly homeless veterans and/or folks who are at risk. And again, then the potential, and again, this is no secret, again, I know that part of the district guided monies with ARPA, also the City of Ranch Cordova's had discussion about additional permanently supportive housing, whether it be for veterans or for folks who are, you know, housing at risk housing-wise. And just in the 50 corridor, again, kind of going to concentration, but it was formerly in District 5, now in District 3, but the, one of the two remaining project room keys that comfort in with 116 units, again, that's not anything that may be on August, although we've extended that many times, but that's currently in the inventory of services in that corridor. But that's why I ask, is all the sites that you've looked at that meet the screening criteria, all of those, with the exception of the one at Bradshaw and Kiefer, are in the City of Ranch Cordova in addition to being sites that meet the criteria? So they're not in the unincorporated, they're in the city. We've been in some discussions about the future of those sites as it relates to potentially striking some arrangement with the City of Ranch Cordova, including the site that would house some additional permanently supportive housing. But I just wanted to make that note because, again, if there's any question about what's being done in that part of the world and has been for a better part of 20 years, we are doing quite a bit as it relates to serving the unhoused population, folks who've fallen into, you know, challenges in their life. Again, it's not necessarily a safe-stay, but certainly is transitional and/or permanently supportive housing for folks who are homeless. I just, you know, when I look at concentration, I look at campus and willingness to try to look at doing more on the campus, even in concert with what this board authorized 20-plus years ago as it relates to families, we're about maxed out. And again, thank you for the work, Jeff, you and your team, to, you know, address some of the roof issues and other issues with the current housing out there. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, as you do one through eight, it sounds like there's a lot of potential. I would just put forward that there's a fairly significant concentration of good work that's going on out at Mather and is within the City of Ranch Cordova in addition to any other criteria you've looked at, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, thanks.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Kennedy, I'm sorry.
Back on the last one. It says Bradshaw and Kiefer, is that the Wet Center?
It would be the east side of Bradshaw. It would be there.
Oh, east side?
Yeah.
Why is the Wet Center not considered?
The west side of.
The Wet Center.
Oh, the Wet Center?
The Warren E. Thornton Center.
The Warren E. Thornton Center, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right, sorry.
So the Warren E. Thornton Center, we're actually pursuing, looking at putting DCFAS' CPSU unit there in a portion. And I believe that Behavioral Health is looking to cite youth mental health program there on the newer side of Wet Center.
So I was just going to add to that, Wet Center is an asset that we've been looking at for different purposes, Supervisor. Jeff just mentioned a couple of the key ones we're looking at. You know of the issues we've had with OB3.
Okay, so that's a C.
So that's a possibility. If those possibilities, though, fizzle out and none of those things happen, Wet Center is still something that we can look at. But again, to Supervisor Natoli's point about overconcentration, all those things have to weigh in.
Yeah, all right.
I think, you know, the other thing that I want to mention about Branch Center and Wet Center is.
Which is the Warren E. Thornton Center.
Warren E. Thornton Center, I'm sorry, yes. Is that, you know, we've tried to, or I've tried to steer away adult programs from Brant Center because of the youth concentration. We have the high school right down the street that they walk down, you know, Brant Center. So we've tried to keep the adult population or programs out of, out of that as much as possible, but we can sure look at that in the future.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, we've had discussions of a potential use there that is needed, so frankly, that would probably be more appropriate, so. But in the meantime, I'd like to keep it on the list as a consideration.
I would just say that, that we've been working on a community meeting within the next couple of weeks to talk with the Rosemont and Butterfield Riviera East Communities about the repurposing of the Thornton Center, would be, at least, we were going to share that, and doing it now very publicly. We are looking at, and actually underway, a safe house for seniors converting one of the former facilities. And then the discussion, and again, no big secret here, one of the potential locations for the mental health rehabilitation facility is being looked at at Brant Center, and we're going to have a community meeting to discuss that. And so, but I, I think that if you put, and I've said this to Bruce, Bruce and Jeff both, you start bringing too much focus to all the things we're looking at, or you bring focus to it, but it, then the concentration becomes the issue, and at some point, you know, communities, we're just going to, you're going to get tremendous resistance, and I mean, my colleagues are aware of this. And so the idea was to step through this and to look at variety of needs that we have for young people, for youth that are in distress, for seniors that are in distress, for folks that are in the homeless category, those that need mental health services. And again, we struggle with this throughout the broader community, but I just wanted to share that we are seriously looking at those sites in Brant Center, and I appreciate Jeff's work and certainly any questions of my colleagues. Again, we're working to have our meeting within the next couple of weeks to actually talk about the approaches out there, and I think some of them will be well received, others, you may get some, you know, feedback that may tell us that they don't think that's such a good idea, but we are actively looking at those sites.
And Supervisor, if I may, I mean, like, I used to use the Wet Centers as an example. I mean, it's, it's an existing use or was.
Right, yeah. And that's right, looking for the, the youth, I think that was the whole idea. We've got folks that are now being housed in an office building, again, not big choice, but because of some of the, the stressors that we have within the system of where folks can be placed, at least once they're in our care and custody. So we're looking at maybe using some of those facilities that might be very adaptable to that, so. Yeah. Supervisor Desmond.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, you made me, actually made me think of something, because it seemed like you're alluding to some of these sites, you know, look at possibly different uses along, I guess, the homeless response spectrum, right? I mean, it seems to me some of these sites also, as we go through this discussion and evaluation, some sites could become a tiny home village for permanent supportive housing, some could be limited to certain populations, maybe, some could possibly have a, more of a behavioral health aspect to them. So I, I just think about that, too, because I think they don't all have to be safe stay, you know, immediate, right off the streets. I mean, they, they have other uses along the continuum as well for, you know, relatively little investment, I think. But anyway, just something that I've just...
There's a spectrum, and again, you know, I think the charge you took was for the, the safe stay, but there are, you know, any number of things that we do going through the, you know, the spectrum of services, including permanent supportive housing, which we talk about a lot. But I, I would agree, and I think that the transitional and for, you know, age groups, for, you know, women and children, for veterans, for those that may have behavioral health, I mean, there's different, you know, within that spectrum of a homeless population. And we know that there, you know, people can be served, and, you know, some of the sites we're looking at, wherever they are in the county, probably have viability for some of those things, but maybe are not best suited for, you know, the, the safe stay approach.
Correct, correct. So of the four sites on the, the, this slide, there's really only one that we're, county-owned site that we're, we're looking at and, and pursuing for a potential safe stay site. The other sites are, we, again, I think Emily mentioned leases or privately-owned sites that we're, we're vetting and we're working on. And so I just wanted to, to highlight that. And I think, you know, I also want to thank Emily, Bruce, David for, for all their help and working through this. I want to thank my staff, especially Chris Bryson, Stephanie Hofer, John Rocha, and I also want to thank Sally Grant with the GIS team that helped us through this, this exercise and gave us the ability to filter by district, to be able to magnify all the county-owned sites by district, to be able to eliminate or, or look at those sites a little cleaner. So with that, Emily.
So just to finish up, thanks, Jeff. And so this, so Jeff sort of started macro and got it narrow, I'm going to go a little bit narrower, and we're going to talk about these four sites. And, and while it says actively pursuing, what this really is, this is, first of all to represent that we are looking throughout the county, and we're looking for opportunities throughout the county and all your districts, you know, wherever it might be, and that currently, you know, and, and current could be, changes every day. Things come to us every day, new sites come, as Jeff said, John is, I don't know what he's doing other than looking for sites for us, honestly. So just as a, this, this shows a quick summary of the four sites that were just on the, on the last map. This is a little bit of a theoretical exercise, but to sort of give us an idea of like, what could this mean if we were to do these four theoretical sites? As you can see on this list, only one of them is, is county-owned, the other three are private, and two of them are undisclosed because we have yet to do some of the community work. The first one obviously is disclosed, because we had this conversation in this chamber just a couple of weeks ago, as well as with the community. So to try to give you some perspective on what capacity this approach might get you, and, and obviously, all these sites can change and grow and have different options to Supervisor Desmond's point, some of them might be better tailored to cer, certain sub-populations. We put together some of these estimates. These costs are very, very site-dependent, and every site is going to require a much deeper dive. But as you can see, these four theoretical sites, some of which are very large, some of which are very small, we estimate if we were to develop them all, would be just over $20 million in capital costs, which would include some land costs, because three of them are privately owned, so come with either a lease or a purchase, as well as about $12.5 million annually to operate for serving just under 400 people.
Okay, just pause, we've got two Supervisors in the queue, so.
Okay.
Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. So, thank you for the chart, for the table. Are we also looking at the estimated capital cost per bed? Because I just did the quick math, and these four sites range from $55,000 to $75,000 per bed.
Right.
So are we, do we all, are we all agreeing that we're in such a crisis mode that that's not a consideration? I, I mean, it's not, it's kind of a rhetorical question, but I mean, you know, when we start inching up towards a six-digit figure per bed, you know, I started to get a little fidgety in terms of, you know, wanting to really ask the question, do we look at something else that perhaps has a better return on investment in terms of serviceability?
No, I think that's a great question. Actually, my next point was about cost per bed of operations, not so much the capital, because that's sort of how I think about it, but I think the capital cost is important, too. Certainly, that is a big investment, but the intention of, these are that, that one bed is serving multiple people over the course of the year. So if you're rotating people through three or four times a year, you know, the cost per person, per, I mean, it's still a capital cost, it is a real capital outlay.
And you bring up a good point, so, and maybe you covered it earlier, but is there an expectation on the timing of rotation?
Well, we always have a goal that is short as possible with a positive exit. But that being said, the reality in today's market with the limited resources of the folks we're serving in rental markets, I think it's probably realistic to expect that a positive exit is going to take four to six months, sometimes longer for some people. Certainly, some people be on the shorter end, some of them be on the longer. When we had this conversation in these chambers about the recently opened Salvation Army beds, I think I estimated that each bed would serve three people in a year, which means, you know, a four-to-six-month stay per person. We certainly see some people exiting quicker, but the reality is that many people are requiring much longer terms of sheltering. But getting to the operational cost, if you, if you do the operational side of the equation that you just did, you're going to get to about $90 a bed a night, but that is important to, to underscore, that includes facility operation, so rental of porta-potties and sanitation stations that you don't see in, in a traditional shelter. And as a comparison, a typical sort of full-service shelter bed in our community, on a per-night in an existing facility, is somewhere between $50 and $60 a bed a night. So it's, it's probably aligning with that when you extract out the facility costs. So to Supervisor Serna's point, the difference here really is the investment in a new facility, because we're recognizing that the existing facilities we have in our community aren't, aren't meeting the needs.
That $90 per, per day or per night, that includes, that's, that's the full freight, that's food, that's water, that's...
Yeah, this is our estimate, and we're, and I should say, right now, we have a bid document out for the operator of a potential, of our first sort of tranche of safe stay, so we'll see how their budgets line out. But I hope, yes, that would include the onsite operator providing food, all the sanitation services, the case management, et cetera.
Okay, because that's about a little more than $16,000 a year, oh, I'm sorry, based on a, a rotation of twice a year. So six-month stay, it's about $16,000 a person.
I'm going to trust your math, because you're much better at the dais than I am, so, yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna, great, actually, really great points. I, and, and it is impressive with the math, I could not do that that quickly. So, and, and just kind of along those lines, this wasn't, this isn't what I was going to ask you about initially, but do we have a sense, Emily, of, for every person, maybe we can get off of the street, how, how much money does that save us in terms of other emergency responses? You know, what's the kind of, is there a cost benefit, is there a cost offset to that?
Yeah.
Has that quantified in any way?
That is a great question, our return on investment, for lack of a... I don't have the average. I know that a few years ago, the city and the county embarked on that effort with some of our hospital systems, some of you might remember this, and what they did is looked at the sort of the most costly people in the system. This is how you ended up orienting your flexible supportive rehousing program to the top 250 users. And those are people who were the most frequent users of behavioral health, the criminal justice system, and were experiencing homelessness. And at that time, which I think was 2016 or 2017, correct me, the average cost just of, of those county costs, so excluding like the private hospitals and, and, you know, other external costs that aren't borne by the public, I believe it was about $50,000 per person, and the high-range person, I'm looking at Supervisor Kennedy, because you were deep into it, I think was, was approaching $300,000 or $400,000 per year.
That's correct.
Does that sound right to you?
Yes.
But even if it's someone who's not maybe one of those high...
Right.
...users, there's still a cost.
Right.
It's part of the calculus.
So easily thousands of dollars to...
That's a really important part of this discussion. So what I was initially going to ask you about is, and again, I'll reiterate it again, the site that's on here, Marconi Boulevard, none of these have been decided. These are, these are conversations, and I would never support anything unless, until we have the, the public outreach and go through that, obviously. But I'm, you know, the size of this, you and I have had some conversations about this, and, and for some communities where there maybe aren't as many, and certainly physical limitations, physical characteristics of the site, but also based on kind of the needs of the community and how many unsheltered are in that community, that, that could impact the, the size and scope of, of a safe stay community. What is, what is kind of that sweet spot in terms of, of numbers that you're seeing, Emily?
Right, I mean, certainly, we have shelters in our community, they're as small as like 12 beds. Typically, they're serving a sub-population like youth, and they're very successful. They obviously don't have the cost benefits.
Right.
The largest shelter I believe we have in our community is, holding aside project room key, because it's a little bit of an anomaly, is about 120 beds. There are certainly successful shelter programs in other communities that approach many, many more beds, but I would, I would say, you know, a, a sweet spot in terms of like minimum and maximum, maybe anywhere ranging from 20 to 150. I mean, I, you know, doing a shelter program that's outside the scattered sites, that is, you know, five beds, you're probably, you're probably going to run into...
Lose a lot of efficiencies with that, yeah.
Right, right.
Okay.
And certainly, if you're targeting certain sub-populations, youth is one, certainly some folks, an LGBT community, those types of communities, elderly, I can, I could certainly see justification of a smaller shelter and increased costs, because the special needs don't really align with large settings.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy, you, okay, go ahead, Emily.
And...
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Frost, I'm sorry.
Oh, Emily, I just wanted to ask you, so you looked in the entire unincorporated, there wasn't a lot identified in my district, I'm assuming, because it was maybe these are the proximity to services, or is that why, or?
Yeah, and so within your district, as well as Supervisor Kennedy's district, this is the county-owned land, we didn't find anything that rose to the top. Most of it, I think, and Jeff may know, some of it is about ownership. Was it within the Parkway, or was it in, in a, being used for something else? But certainly, I believe in your district, a lot of it was about proximity, which is why it's so important to have access to the private properties.
Okay.
That's where I think we're, we might find some potential within District Four as well as District Two.
If I may, Supervisor, on that point, too, what you're seeing here today is where we are as of today.
Okay.
You know, so we have a very active effort ongoing, we keep looking for different possibilities. Just folks are in touch with potential real estate brokers and other people. So this is not the end-all list that you're ever going to see about potential sites.
Got it.
It's where we stand today.
Thank you.
Quick follow-up to that, and I assume, a quick follow-up to the question by Supervisor Frost, I assume it's based on the, the newest supervisorial district boundaries, because District Four did have some significant changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I'm looking, yes. It was done after, I think we, we actually talked about some of the sites that were right on the border and changed. So finally, I did want to end, because we did hear very, very clearly from you last time, that we wanted to end on the discussion around community engagement and how this factors in as we proceed forward with either the sites we talked about today or future sites. As I said, this initial site, what we've shown you today, is based purely on these four or five objective criteria. It does not weigh in community impacts, it does not weigh in some of the over-concentration, and some of the things that you guys know about the communities that we may not be as well-versed in. So our, our recommendations, or what we've been doing thus far, is as soon as we can, as soon as we know about sites, especially those that are private, is to work with the Supervisor's off, Supervisor's office, to narrow down and see if, if sites that are coming up, especially in the private market, are viable and, and would work in your, in your community. And we have committed to, prior to any construction starting, to work with your offices, to engage the community, and of course, take any sites back to the full board for review before, before moving forward. And then just as importantly, because we talked about some of the timing issues, is during construction, construction of these safe stay sites, depending on the site, is going to take at least a couple of months. And so certainly, there's opportunities during construction, as well as throughout operations, to continue that dialogue with the community. We talked about a couple of weeks ago, development of good neighbor policies, working with the selected onsite operator, and maybe even creating some community engagement opportunities, some formal, some formal ways for the community to check in on a regular basis. So certainly would appreciate your input on that, and how to overlay that with, with some of these efforts, especially in the private real estate market.
If I may, Emily, on that point, Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that point, I think this is, Emily's raising a very key point here, that I wanted just to expand on a bit, because your board has been very clear with us in the past about the importance of, frankly, moving quickly to try to find locations, and that's completely appropriate and understandable. We all know we're dealing with a crisis here. So we've looked at all the county potential sites, you've got a good picture of what our limitations are there, here. So that means we do have to look at these private possibilities. And with that, if you remember Emily's chart, with that comes some pros and some cons, and one of which is the need to move faster, or we lose possibilities. That does not mean, that does not mean that community engagement is not critical to this, because it is. It has been, it will be, and it's going to be a key priority of ours moving forward. But having said that, you have this balance between these opportunities that come up. We've already had some, at least one notable email from a particular real estate broker that wasn't very pleasant, because he didn't think we're moving fast enough on these things, and we lost that opportunity. So it really requires us to find a balance, to work with your offices, to find a balance here, so that we don't lose these opportunities, but we still have the kind of discussion we need to have with the communities that are affected by that. Because the reality is, the reality is, that even with all the good work that we've done in the homeless area that Emily ticked off at the beginning... in the homeless area that Emily ticked off at the beginning with this year's budget, with our ARPA money, and what we've done in prior years, if we don't expand capacity, the community is not going to see any visual difference here that they want to see. We have got to look for ways to expand capacity. That's what we've been trying to do. So as you think about this presentation and this workshop tonight and the feedback that we get, I just want to be really sure that we're moving in a direction that you're comfortable with and that you can support on this. Because we've had our foot on the gas. Now, some people listening to that may say, "You've had your foot on the gas?" But we really have, and Jeff's people have been phenomenal working with us on this. But there's pros and cons of whatever approaches we take, and I think you need to consider that.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah, and Bruce just summed it up. So what we're looking for from you today is feedback. This is obviously a workshop, there's no formal action being taken. We'd love to hear your input on any of the sites that we discussed, any sites we didn't discuss, any potential ideas that you have. I did hear some conversation around expanding our look outside of just Safe Stays into other types of facilities, any other ideas you have. But the next steps with feedback from your offices, either formally tonight or throughout our conversations, is that Jeff's team will work to develop site plans as sites rise to the top, will work to develop timelines and funding plans, and work with your offices on community engagement. And we will continue to pursue all private options that may come our way. So with that, myself and Jeff and Bruce are available for any questions.
Okay, got folks in the queue. So Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily, for the presentation. And I want to first address Bruce's last remarks. I couldn't agree with you more. It is a balance. However, I would also stipulate that there's some proportionality here that we need to be mindful of, which is certainly understand the, you know, urgency with which we'll need to continue to work with real estate interests. But I think that in those instances, we need to have and be prepared to work equally swift with community engagement so that you, you know, you attain that balance. And if we can't do that, then we're going to have to figure out something, you know, some other way to find it. Because the last thing I think both staff and board members want is surprise.
Right.
Okay. In terms of the previous slide, Emily, if you can go back, I would add to this, if it's not already kind of inferred or understood, and I'm just using an arbitrary distance here, but I would say in those occasions, on those occasions where there is a site that is immediately adjacent to another supervisory district, or I'm going to say within a half-mile of another supervisory district, that staff understand that there's going to be an expectation that, you know, similar briefings are going to happen in as real-time as possible between the two. In instances where you might have a potential site that is located between more than two districts or involving more than two districts, I think there just needs to be a little more attention paid so that obviously the Brown Act doesn't get violated.
Right.
But I do think that if we kind of learn from recent experience, that that should be one of the component parts of how we, you know, keep us informed so that we can keep our constituents informed. I just didn't see it necessarily explicitly referenced here. So I would, in terms of your request for feedback, I'd offer that.
Thank you.
And again, half-mile, I just kind of pull out of the ether here.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's the right distance or not, but...
Point taken.
But I think it's reasonable.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Very good. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, and, yeah, I agree with Supervisor Serna. I mean, I even brought in Supervisor Natoli when we had one that was potentially very close, so I adhere to that. And Bruce, your comment is a good one. I mean, we have to find that balance. I don't know how we do it, frankly, and we may have missteps. We are government working in the private sector at government speed, and that doesn't work.
Well, I think Supervisor, that balance could vary depending on the site, in the community we're talking about.
Sure.
But this is one of the struggles we've had here, it's a real dilemma that we've faced because community engagement and a good neighbor policy has been fundamental to what this county has done for decades.
Yeah.
And we want to adhere to that. At the same time, there's these sites that come up and you lose them if you can't move fast.
I understand that, yeah.
So we got really, well, I think the important thing is to work with your offices as these sites come up to agree on what their approach might be.
Right. Thank you.
Good. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and thank you again, Emily, and Jeff, and Bruce, and for all the work on this. Bruce, I'll start out with your comments. I mean, I hear the passion, the urgency, and I share it. I tell you, I'm desperate to find something that works better than what we're doing now. My constituents are desperate. You know, I don't know about my colleagues here, but I have, you know, a lot of people ready to come after me with torches and pitchforks regardless of which way we go on this. And I think that the capacity, your points about the capacity, Bruce, I think the capacity is the key. And I loved hearing Siobhan's, you know, plans for more behavioral health capacity because that is a huge part of the capacity too, obviously. So that kind of capacity, along with the housing continuum capacity, beginning with the Safe Stay, not ending with it, beginning with this, and I want to reiterate that to everybody who's listening, certainly. I think that, you know, as we get into a discussion about any of these sites, you know, we can get into details about some of the concerns that Supervisor Serna brought up, which I think is the biggest concern of the public. And I want to make sure I mention, the desperation is the desperation of the folks who are unhoused, desperation for help, desperation by our small business owners, desperation by folks in their communities who see their sense of community and safety just slipping away, and familiarity slipping away. I mean, I see all the time, right in my neighborhood, people walking out into a street, out into a lane to avoid an encampment, you know, a mother and a small child. I mean, that, we all see that kind of thing. But in terms of some of the things that Supervisor Serna brought up, he highlighted, you know, a major concern. Are these Safe Stay communities going to become a bigger problem? Are they going to be successful in terms of getting folks to come in? Or are they going to be, hey, we have this Safe Stay community now in the neighborhood, and that's great, now we have a lot more campers still on the street too? It has not resulted in any tangible benefit. So I, and I guess, because we have seen that on X and Alhambra, and I know that's been a real challenge in the city. And, you know, I won't ask you today, Emily, but certainly when we have that community engagement, I'm going to want to know, what are the strategies that we can put in place? And I know there's no guarantees, I know nothing is a silver bullet, but what have we learned to help make sure we're more successful than we've seen in other places in the past? I know we're going to be having a discussion about, as part of a good neighbor policy, maybe having a buffering area that hopefully can be expanded and contracted depending on the location of the site. But let's see, I've got a few notes here, I just... And another benefit I want to throw out there that I think that is really making this problem much worse is, we see a lot of well-intentioned nonprofit operators out there feeding folks in the streets and encampments, delivering clothes and other goods. I mean, I think to myself, my vision is that if we have these locations, we could channel all of that into, you know, helping at these locations. So it has the potential to mitigate so many negative, I mean, most importantly, help folks who are unhoused, but mitigate so many negative elements to the un-sanctioned encampments we're seeing out on our streets. So just want to close it with, I just want to impress upon you, I thank you so much for your efforts. I certainly share your sense of urgency. We cannot compromise urgency for a lack of community engagement. And I'll go even one step further, I agree with Supervisor Serna 100% if it's in proximity to another supervisory district, but I would say if another of my colleagues is, obviously without violating the Brown Act, if they want to include me in their efforts in community engagement, and hopefully vice versa, I'd love to include some of you in some of my efforts too.
You have.
That's right. Phil and I have already engaged in this, and it's not easy. It's difficult, but it does help to have a little support from colleagues here. So I just look forward to starting that community engagement right away, certainly in terms of sites you've identified in District Three. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair, and pitchforks and torches is a good day. So a couple of things. First of all, if you want specific feedback, I don't think I need to tell you this, Emily, but I'll say it publicly for the record, I want to continue to explore the two sites of the four that are in District Two. I still am not ready to give up on any of that, and I'm willing to be the first if necessary, and that's fine. I would also, and Supervisor Natoli, I heard what you said about Mather, you know, and I'm just going to disagree just a little bit. I understand it is concentrated, there's no question about that. But if you drive around Mather, which I do regularly, you know, you don't know there's homeless people there. I mean, it's...
We've done a very good job of it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, so it can be, you know, managed well. So I would like to explore Mather, all due respect, because, and I hear from the public quite a bit, I hear the two things. I hear Mather, and I hear the Boys Ranch. Now, the Boys Ranch just doesn't work for all of the reasons that we've talked about. I mean, the cost, the location, the, you know, you're going to get people to go out there once. The other one is, is that, you know, and what I've said all along, is that if we do it wrong the first and second time, there's not going to be a third and fourth time. We can't have, with all due respect to, you know, our colleagues down the street, we can't have a railroad drive situation ever happen. And the problem with railroad drive, and Supervisor Desmond, or one of the problems with railroad drive that Supervisor Desmond kind of alluded to was the defensible area around it. You know, I was at The Grove the other day, the tiny home project in North Sacramento, and it's very controlled access in and out. There were no people hanging out in front or anywhere around it. So what can we do to make sure that that is the model and not railroad drive? Because I think that's what people are the most afraid of. I think they're less fearful of what's happening behind that fence than they are of what's happening on the other side of it.
Yes, and having been at the city with railroad happen, I...
And I don't blame you.
I have a lot of thoughts about it. So I think that, I agree with you, I think that a lot about the defensible space, I mean, railroad drive was located in an area where there were hundreds and hundreds of folks unsheltered, and the capacity was at 1.200 reduced to 100. There wasn't capacity to serve the needs. So certainly, that was it. I think that, I agree with you, I've been out to The Grove, and the physical layout of it allows for that sort of one-access-in-and-out. It's very well-staffed, from what I can tell. And that is the approach that we're looking for as well as we stand these up, is that these are very intentionally staffed with organizations who understand their responsibilities not just within the fence, but it's outside the fence as well. And so we learned a lot from railroad, for sure, and I think that we can make lots of improvements on that, so I hear you for sure. And as we are looking at potential providers or operators, those are highest on my list, is what is your experience doing this type of sheltering within communities, not just sort of, you know, basic sheltering that may have been around for 20 years.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
I think a whole lot's been said, so I don't have a whole lot except to say thank you. I know we've had a lot of conversations, and you've all worked very hard on this. I'm getting a lot of feedback from areas where we have some large encampments, and they are really wishing we could fix it in that community. They're not adverse to that. And I don't know, you know, like the homeless people that we moved out of the, I guess it was, I think it was the Parkway, but it was in a flood zone and it was a fire hazard, so we moved them across the street, and I think now they're probably on private land. And it's not feasible to put them in a flood zone. But are we, are we, I know you're looking and trying to find places for those encampments that are already there, but there, I think the community wouldn't be adverse if there was the right spot in that community.
And I know the exact camp you're talking about, and that is one of the communities where we have asked John, who works for Jeff, to target some of his research, because it is an area where we don't have immediately available county-owned land that is not within the Parkway. That, you're right, the camp wasn't within the Dry Creek Parkway, and for all the reasons you named, flood and fire danger, had to leave. So that is one of the sites where we've charged John specifically to look for private opportunities, and I agree with you, that encampment, as with a lot of these encampments, is somewhat of a community as well. And so probably be more amenable to moving together rather than dispersing to a variety of shelters throughout the community. So we, that one is top on our list, that community that you're talking about is top on our list.
If I might add, Supervisor, just to remind the board that in addition to this work we're doing with potential sites, we still meet every week with all the departments involved in homelessness with our encampment team. We have a Call of Duty Wednesday, and we try to do the very best we can with the resources we have to deal with these really troublesome encampments in different parts of the county. I mean, we work with your chiefs of staff to keep you briefed on that, so we'll continue to do that. But I go back to what I said, we have to increase our capacity, certainly to do more, but we're still making every effort we can to do what we got.
And I don't know, is Orangeville too far out? Because it might not be a bad idea to meet with the Orangeville Community Council, because they just started their own heart, they're really on fire, excited about helping the local homeless, and they're sandwiched in between Citrus Heights and Folsom. And Folsom wants to do a tiny home project. So, you know, I know they might not want to move homeless people into Folsom that aren't from Folsom, and they don't have very many homeless people, but there might be between, I don't know if that's too far out, but there might be some conversations around the Orangeville Fair Oaks area.
We'd be happy to. And, you know, we have had some conversations with our, with some of the cities, such as the smaller cities, because you're right, they have very unique populations, they have populations that are very connected to the community where they live. So we have had with at least a couple of the suburban cities, and so I would welcome that. And to Supervisor Desmond's point, you know, in those communities, a much smaller site might make more sense because their population isn't as large, but I don't think...
It's meaningful because they want to stay, they're afraid to come downtown, so it would be meaningful to have something there.
I'd be happy to, I can connect with Matt to get the right person to talk to.
Okay. Thanks for everything. Thanks for all your hard work.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. I'm going to weigh in here, again, thank you, Emily, and the team for your work. A couple of things, and I asked about them earlier, so I'm not going to belabor them, but I do think, looking at the concentration, but going back to the point you made about balance, and I'm going to use the Mather example there, that yes, you wouldn't know that you're serving several hundred formerly homeless folks at Mather. If you drove by, you'd have to be, call it to your attention, because again, the program efforts, and whether it's Next Move, Volunteers of America, Nations First with the Veterans Program, other providers that are out there do an excellent job, you know, working with transitional-age foster youth that would be homeless if it weren't for the Adolfo Program. The program for families where we house, you know, 23 families currently, and, you know, could do more if we had more facilities. You have 60 children or thereabouts that are on the campus currently. You've got single persons, and some of them who virtually were on the streets, have enrolled in the program and are getting help through both Department Health Services, the VOA program. And so we have, you know, several hundred folks that are being served there, and I think that, to my point earlier, that the sites that are identified at Mather, many of those came to the county via an economic development conveyance. But the 30 acres that came where the campus is located, and part of which we leased to the city of Ranch Cordova for the 150 units, 50 transitional, again, for homeless and permanently supportive housing, that 30 acres came with the conveyance that called out the requirement that we provide services, and we vetted for homeless under the McKinney Act, and we've done that. We've done it, again, to, I think, to the credit of this county, working with the community, but the providers, and again, folks in this room who've been with that program for a long, long time, in its various iterations. And I guess I would be concerned that, one, those, all the parcels ever shown lie within the city of Ranch Cordova, that, and I know there are conversations currently about doing more on some of the sites, that again, are part of a more broader discussion, both with the ARPA money and with other city resources, and so those are in the works, they're still, I think, too soon to talk with any certainty. And I guess there are other landowners who may be talking with the city, as I understand it, about what they might do there too. But... but on non-county-owned land. And so, I would guess I'd be concerned that if you were to continue to explore those sites, one, they are, you know, county-owned or not, they're part of a bigger complex. And I just, I think that, to the point I made earlier, and Supervisor Desmond touched on this, is that, you know, there's a spectrum. You know, we're talking about the early entry, the safe stay, folks who are in, you know, very difficult situations that present some of the issues both to themselves but to the broader community. And I think to introduce that into the campus environment, to the setting we have there with both supportive housing, transitional, and some early-entry folks that are getting treatment for, you know, alcohol and other substances as a part of their overall regiment enrollment in those programs, I think that we run a significant risk, both with our city partners, but also with, you know, the broader context of the community framework there of getting into an issue, and again, maybe over-concentration, not the proper way to portray it, but of upsetting a balance that I think we've worked very hard on, and have been very successful in helping many, many homeless folks. We've built credibility in the program, we've built community support. And I guess I would be concerned that, ever how well we run what we're talking about here, that that becomes, you know, potentially a major obstacle and a pushback point. But as I've said, and we just board authorized a few weeks ago, and Jeff spoke to it today, looking at utilization of the campus itself, for, we can certainly accommodate, I think, with some innovative approaches, you know, and however the housing structure, you know, modular units and so forth, not just be married to the fact that we have those propeller buildings, but we have services in place, certainly Volunteers of America, county agencies provide services there. So, I think it's logical to look at how we can build more capacity within the system, because again, what we're focused on here is the safe stay, getting people initially in a situation that hopefully allows them to propel forward, that we need to have capacity. And if you aren't able to transition folks out of transitional, or to have the permanently supportive housing at the end of it, as we well know, for those people who are successful in, you know, moving out of homelessness into situations that better their lives, you know, better lives of their families, but certainly, I think, showed to the community that we're making progress, we need to build that capacity. And again, as I've said many times, I'm certainly prepared to, in my role as representative for that area, but certainly as a member of this board, doing our part to try to, you know, build on that capacity and build on successes out there. But I'm, you know, frankly, not enamored with the idea of pursuing, you know, looking at the camping or the safe stay approach as a part of, I don't know, that wouldn't be a compliment, but I think it would certainly present some obstacles to the conversations we're having with the city, but also, and the good work we're doing there. So, I'd like to look at building off the existing campus and some of the programs that we have there, and accommodating more folks within the context of that. And some of those are currently within the homeless population. I would be willing to bet, whether they be veterans, or folks who've transitioned out of foster situations that are in challenges, families that are in challenges, and certainly, single persons that have substance abuse and alcohol challenges in their lives. I also wanted to say, I think that the scatter site, again, we talk about it, but, you know, if you'd asked me the exact number today, until you quoted it, I couldn't have told you that. I mean, I knew what we'd authorize. So, we have 120 folks that are, at any given time, and there's turnover in these as well. I think that we need to, again, recognizing the difficulties in the market, and it's not, you're not going to pull down, you know, 40 at a time or 100 at a time. I do think that we should continue that approach and steer the, you know, steer the course on that approach, because I think, again, it does, it's proven its viability. But along with that, I guess, and this is probably a discussion for budget, and we've spent the last couple of days talking about ways to help people avoid both the criminal justice system, but also to get help so they don't get themselves into problems, but just the needs in the community, I think we need to look at our available treatment capacity. I know we added 100, you know, 100 slots with, you know, some action we took previously, but in the last few weeks. But we need to take a look at that, and I think certainly the mental health piece of it, and as I've said, I'm, you know, working with our staff to have a community meeting regarding that, and trying to build on the behavioral health part of it. But I think the treatment capacity for folks with, and Supervisor certainly alluded to earlier, you know, certain substance disorders, but however you want to call, they have a drug problem, they have an alcohol problem, they have issues that are really, I think, barriers in many cases to them rising above the situations that we find them in a lot of times homelessness, but not always. And so, I'd like to see, and again, Anne, I don't know what you're going to be bringing forth in the budget, but that seems to be, it's not been an area where we've largely put general fund in the past. It's been kind of, you know, categorized, because we get federal or state help, and we provide some money for grants, and we've been very successful at that. But to me, that's another part of the continuum, is that if you're going to break the cycle of homelessness, yes, people need housing, and they need supportive services, but a lot of times, if they can cope with the issues that they're facing, I'm a big believer that they, you know, again, there are always, maybe going to be some tendencies for them to potentially fall back, but that we hear it time and time again for folks, and whether it's opioid addiction, or it's, you know, any other addiction, alcohol included, I think they're having capacity to help folks. Because the immediacy of that, to me, is very, we talk about urgency of the housing issue here, but if we can't offer somebody, and whether they be homeless or otherwise, some immediate access, and immediate, sometimes really to the word I say, immediate, then you're going to lose them. You're not going to, you're not going to capture that moment. And again, we just don't have that type of capacity, no matter what we try to do, at least currently. And so, I would hope that part of, again, of our overall view here is that, you know, we need to build on that, and I think that certainly behavioral health is doing that with regards to the mental health. We heard that today. And I guess I would go, take it back, if you're looking at sites, to the site at Bradshaw &amp; Kiefer, if we're having a conversation about doing some other things in the Branch Center, which are very, very important, and I think key to helping folks stay out of homelessness, but also to get better, and then I think that that site would become a very big distraction to the conversation we're going to have and have been having, and to some of our work, which I'm very well, you know, well, I'm prepared to do with our community folks out there, and to advance that. And I know our board's going to see an item here in a couple of weeks, so we can have a more broader discussion about that. But I just, I think for the purposes of the balance that we're trying to achieve, the urgency of which has been portrayed here, and this board certainly has stated that in a resolution, I don't want us to trod on the public process, but I also want to be real about, well, at least in certainly the district that I'm familiar with, trying to do not only our part, but to keep advancing the work and to build more capacity in the system. And if we get too strung out on some of these sites with the safe stays, you know, and certainly, we want to, you know, we want to achieve that, the board's directed that, and some of my colleagues have, you know, borne some of that burden early on, it will distract from what we're trying to do, and what we're doing in the bigger part of this, in the sense that the staff time, the, you know, the public recoil in some cases, it just makes it very difficult, and yet it takes away from the work that we're doing, and we know we're doing. And again, I think we need to continue to tell that story. We've talked about this many times from this dais, is that, again, you know, you can always say we're not doing enough, but we are not only doing something, I think that we're doing something significant. And yes, there's a bigger issue out there in that there's more people need to be served, but it's not because this county, and certainly the folks that we partner with in our, you know, other electives, but also with our service providers, are doing, you know, a tremendous amount to try to help people overcome the issue and to get better. But it's very visible, and so, I know we need to continue to stay focused on this at hand. So, but that's my take on the sites that you've identified, certainly at Mather and the one in Rosemont.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. If there are no other board comments, then, do we have callers on this? We do. Okay. And speakers, I had one gentleman, I think Mr. Bell was in the audience, and he may have left. So, anyone else want to address this item? I just see a couple other visitors in the audience, I know. Did you want to address this? No, okay. All right. So, let's go to our phones.
Go ahead and transfer the caller. Hi caller, you have three minutes. Go ahead and start your public comment. Can you please mute the meeting in the background?
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and Supervisors. My name is Rick Eaton. I serve on the Board of Sacramento Area Congregations Together, and I'm speaking this afternoon on behalf of SAC Act Housing and Homelessness Committee. SAC Act is a network of over 40 faith communities of all types located in all districts of the county. We believe that when everyone, that everyone deserves a safe place to live that meets their needs. And when everyone has a home, then all of our communities thrive. We want to thank you and the staff for bringing these proposals forward and having this discussion. As we've expressed in the past, SAC Act supports the creation of safe stay communities, both at the proposed forum site that we discussed a few weeks ago, and at the various sites that are under consideration. We wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Wagstaff's comments about the need to expand capacity. Well-planned tiny home communities that are properly managed by experienced operators and resourced with appropriate mix of onsite services, these are the appropriate first steps to transitioning individuals and families from living on the streets to achieving stability in long-term housing. Not only is this the right thing to do, because everyone deserves a place to live, these communities will reduce crime, reduce the impact of unsheltered homeless on the streets, and will save taxpayers money. And on this last point, we would really urge you to look at the financial impact, again, to law enforcement, fire, all kinds of services as a result of having people unsheltered. While we do strongly support these measures, we feel compelled to point out a couple of additional things. First, there are perhaps 15,000 individuals experiencing homelessness in Sacramento County at this moment, so creating 375 new beds is only a start. So, we urge you to continue to allocate additional money and effort to stand up many more of these communities as soon as possible. Next, and very critically, building temporary shelter capacity must be accompanied by creating significantly more affordable housing. The crisis of homelessness on our streets is directly, directly tied to the lack of affordable housing. Yesterday, we heard from SHRA that a mere 157 new affordable units have been added to the pipeline of housing projects this year. That's simply not enough. The only way we can end homelessness is to radically increase affordable housing production in all parts of the county. And finally, we continue to call upon you to embrace the creation of a regional plan to end homelessness. Such a plan will tie together and coordinate all of the various good efforts going on throughout the county and the cities within the county. And such a plan would demonstrate to the public that all levels of government are working in concert to solve this problem, and that we can create a county where we, that we can all be proud of, and which everyone has a home. Thank you.
Thank you caller, appreciate your comments.
And that concludes your public comments.
Okay, that concludes the public comments. All right. Anne, let me turn to you, because I know you were seeking direction out of this. So, is there anything else you need to give from this board beyond the comments you've heard in order to proceed?
I'm actually going to turn to Bruce and Emily and see if they feel like they have enough.
Okay. You first.
I can, I, thank you. I think we got, I can tell you what I think I heard, and Bruce, tell me if you, so I think I heard definitively from Supervisor Kennedy to continue with the two sites that you're, one that we have all talked about, and another one that we've been working on in the background. I definitely heard from all of you, I believe, is to infuse another look at the sites beyond just sort of the objective site criteria about community appropriateness and over-concentration. And so, we can do that in concert with your offices. I also heard very specifically about adding to our community engagement strategy a connectivity to adjacent district offices, and making sure we're doing that as soon as possible. And I think I did, I think I heard a reaffirmation that we are going in the right direction generally, and that this is a priority, and that moving with expediency balanced with community input remains the board's direction.
That's just what I was going to say. I think, I think I heard that, too.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Emily. Okay, Bruce says ditto. I heard that, so, okay. All right. Very good. Okay, then, that's, it was just informational with the feedback, and thank you for capturing that. Okay, good. All right. Okay, so, with that, then, nothing further on this item. We'll hear more on different aspects of it in the weeks and months to come, I'm sure. So, let's go to item number four.
Item number four. Introduce an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending Chapter 4.54 relating to fireworks. We have full reading and continue to May 24th for adoption.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Mr. Sir.
Yeah, I just, in the interest of time, would like to move adoption of the ordinance.
Eric, you did... Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there anything you need to add? Maybe the motion wasn't clear? I don't know.
Nothing for me.
Okay, thanks. But we do have a speaker, though, so...
All right.
All right, very good. We have a motion and a second. Okay, and we have one on hold. Okay, all right, so, okay, so, Amanda, it is time to distribute materials. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your very brief presentation.
Riveting.
Well, while Amanda's distributing those, Dennis, if you'd like to come forward, that's the material that you gave to the clerk, so she'll get that distributed. I know Mr. Kennedy had a pending appointment, so he had to depart. Okay, Dennis, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, or good evening, in case maybe Chair Natoli and members of the board. On behalf of myself, as well as our client TNT Fireworks and its hundreds of nonprofit partners here in Sacramento County, I would like to thank each and every one of you, your staff, the county executive, the county council, and last but certainly not least, the clerk of the board, for your patience, commitment, and determination to develop and move forward with what is before you for adoption this evening. I'm sure you're familiar with the saying, "If you're not part of the problem, you're part of the solution." I know many of you might think it highly unusual, that given my political lineage, I would invoke a quote attributed to the late political activist and early leader of the Black Panther Party, Eldridge Cleaver. But with your adoption of this ordinance, you are part of the solution to our community, communities, and this state's illegal fireworks problem. It will now be up to the Sacramento Sheriff's Office, Sac Metro Fire District, the state-approved fireworks industry, the community nonprofit organizations that rely on the sale of state-approved fireworks, and your constituents to also be part of the solution by effectively utilizing this tool and others to stop the rampant use of illegal fireworks in this county. As both Sac Metro Deputy Chief Wagaman and I stated at the last board hearing on this ordinance on April 27th, regrettably not enough is being done at the state level to stop the interdiction of these illegal dangerous items into California. And as a result, local jurisdictions have become not only the first line of defense, they have become the only line of defense against illegal fireworks. As I shared with you at the last hearing, there are six fireworks stores in Southern Nevada in the city of Perrump, and seven stores immediately northeast of Reno, in the cities of Shur's, Battle Mountain, Pyramid Lake. These stores sell the full range of federally-approved fireworks that are illegal in California. Most informed estimates suggest that these stores account for at least 60% to 70% of the illegal fireworks used in California. One of these stores, Area 51 Fireworks in Perrump, Nevada, according to press reports, was responsible for both the massive amounts of federally-approved but California illegal fireworks found were involved in the massive explosions and busts in the cities of Ontario and Los Angeles last summer. In 2008, Section 12704 was added to the California Health and Safety Code. That code section gives both the responsibility and the authority to the office of the California Attorney General to put these stores on notice, that if these stores facilitate the shipment of illegal fireworks into California, the California Attorney General would work with federal authorities to bring about federal and/or state prosecutions of them. To date, since January 1, 2008, no California Attorney General has performed this statutory responsibility and... would ask that you call upon the California Attorney General to immediately put these stores on formal notice as well as file appropriate legal actions against those stores where there is evidence showing their involvement in the Ontario and Los Angeles incidents. Having the tools and responsibility to use them is one thing. Effectively using them is significant, whether it's this ordinance or Health and Safety Code section. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dennis, for the patience, first and foremost, listening to hours of other subject matter being deliberated before we got to this item. I think the last thing that you mentioned, the request to send a letter into the California Attorney General's office, is a good one. I certainly would be willing to do that with your help as an individual supervisor, but I would look to my colleagues, unfortunately one of whom has had to leave us early. But we've done this in the past when we all agreed that perhaps this is an opportunity for all five of us to co-sign a letter to the AG's office, since I think we all share the same concern for the proliferation and use of illegal fireworks, not just in the state but certainly in our county. So I would just offer that up, Mr. Chair, as a suggestion for us to maybe consider at some point when we're all convened.
Okay.
And then I would just also note, too, that it seems like it's very apropos that one of these fireworks distributors in Parump, Nevada, it's called Outlaw Pyro. So, yeah.
Phil, do you want to incorporate your motion? I know Supervisor Kennedy had to leave, and then, you know, if there's any objections, we certainly can.
Yeah, I would, I would put that in the form of a motion that we work with Dennis' team to draft a, I'm making a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, you're asking her. To draft a letter to the AG's office expressing our concern, as was mentioned, so that at least the AG's office understands where this board is relative to, again, the proliferation and use of illegal fireworks in our county.
Okay, the second, okay, second I agree to that. And it might be that, you know, with Mr. Jones and with Ms. Travis, to work, make sure, again, so that it reflects, obviously, the county's viewpoint, obviously Dennis is an expert in the industry but represents those folks as well, so, okay, very good. That's the motion. We do have a caller, though, so we'll take, before we vote on this, let's take our caller.
Okay, go ahead and transfer the caller. Go ahead and start your public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lee Miller. I am the coordinator for residents against illegal fireworks. Thank you and your staff for taking the time and effort and commitment to developing the ordinance before you today on behalf of the hundreds of your constituents who have joined ranks in support of this ordinance and meaningful enforcement in the greater Sacramento area. We support it enthusiastically and respectfully request its adoption. The fire prevention and enforcement components of the county are structured differently than those of the city of Sacramento. However, we have learned that community members, neighborhood associations, and homeowner associations can and should play a vital role maximizing the new enforcement tools you will be implementing today to curb illegal fireworks. In Sacramento, the city's model last year demonstrated that effective enforcement of illegal fireworks requires a plan developed in partnership with residents and neighborhood associations. It is obvious that all of you recognize their ability to reach out to their immediate communities. Otherwise, when you campaign for office, you would not request to speak to them. With the adoption of this ordinance, we will now have five incorporated cities within the county, joined by the unincorporated area of Sacramento County, has been put in place a fireworks social host ordinance. Specifically, we are requesting that the board of supervisors establish an independent joint task force led by the deputy county executive for the Department of Public Safety and Justice. And where law enforcement and fire representatives from the five cities of Sacramento, El Grove, Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, Folsom, along with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, Sacramento Metro Fire, state-approved fireworks industry, and the public are working together to develop a cohesive enforcement and public education plan for this Fourth of July. Thank you for your time and for moving this illegal fireworks social host ordinance forward.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you for your efforts as well. Okay, do we have any other callers?
Yeah, that concludes your public.
Okay, that concludes the public comment. We did hear the request, is that something you would want to take a look at? It wasn't, it's not part of the motion, but.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that.
Okay, all right. I know Eric's been involved and appreciate the leadership of your office, so, okay. All right, we do have a motion in a second. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Okay, motion passes with those members present.
And so this would be effective for 30 days? Or do we have to come back one more time?
Yes, it's coming back on the 24th.
Okay, and then it'd be.
This is introduction today.
Introduction today. It'll be back on the 24th, and then it would be effective the 23rd of.
Correct.
Of June, okay. All right, very good. Okay, that concludes the items on the agenda. We now come to our time for comments from the county executive.
I just want to thank you for your feedback on the homeless safe stay seating plan. I know that that's a challenging conversation and it's equally challenging for staff trying to move this along, so I look forward to continued conversations with you.
Good, thanks, Anne. All right, and I'll go to board members. Any, no one in the queue, but any announcements? Okay, all right, with that, won't be labored any longer. We are done with today's business. We will adjourn and come back in session on May 24th. See you then. Thanks.